All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. It's 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Rachel Grant, Commissioner Emily Klaus, and Commissioner Carolina Mihia. On virtual platform, it is recorded and will be posted to the YouTube channel within 24 hours. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed to the board. Action may be taken at this meeting. First up is a second review of this afternoon's business agenda. Madam Clerk, what items do we need to?
The only new addition this week is consent item six, the resolution setting 2026 benefits contributions.
That's a new item?
Item was added yesterday, I believe. It was timely news because of Director, we have here to give the board a quick update.
You know, right? Yeah, yeah.
Annual items, Nick?
Yeah, new item, so we should just kind of touch.
Yep.
Item six on consent.
Commissioners Maria Ponte, this is an annual and routine item, and it is asking you to approve the resolution setting the 2026 benefits package and dependent contribution for Thurston County employees. The plan will be the same as this year, the Kaiser Permanente Value Plan. And as the county manager stated, open enrollment starts next week, so that's the time sensitivity of. Now, I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions from Maria?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
That's the only new item, no other changes?
That's right. The public hearing that we discussed last week was added to the agenda, but it was reviewed. They're the only changes.
And that is related to which one? There's two public hearings?
The five-year homeless housing plan.
That was the item where public help thought they had submitted it, but they didn't quite get it into the system. So it was already scheduled and noticed as coming forward, so.
Just wasn't on the printed draft last week, but we did talk about it.
Yes.
Okay.
And they did a presentation on the five-year homeless plan a couple of weeks back.
Any questions on those items? There was nothing else that required follow-up, so got long consent agenda and about five department items. All right. Annual rezon package follow-up is next?
Yes, Chair, if I could before, well, Ashley can come on up. I also wanted to introduce our new Economic Development Program Manager. Justine started yesterday. Yeah, come on. That would be a great opportunity for say good morning and hi. And she is her second day on the job, and I think she still has a, you have a still attempt name badge?
Yes.
Yeah, so. We're working through all the onboarding. And what we're going to be doing for the next few weeks is working with Justine and CPED Department, so she can get a lay of the land of how that department permits different projects, what projects are out there, how projects come to term, and what are the different players that work in that. And so really appreciate Ashley and Josh for working together to start her onboarding process. Justine, anything you'd like to say?
No, just thank you for having me and morning.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hi, thanks, Justine.
I did tell her to stay because this is a good opportunity to listen in on future economic development opportunities.
Yeah, just straight to Ashley?
Straight to Ashley, yeah.
Good morning, Board. Ashley Rice, CPED Director. Thank you for having me back. We're just going to go through the slides that we had last week. And then I know Commissioner Fournier, you had specific questions about the industrial and studies, so I brought answers to those. But just as a quick refresher here, this is our 2025 package of rezones, so we have two for your consideration. You can move forward with these. You can also choose not to move forward with these. Josh used a really good metaphor when he talked about the comprehensive plan with me last week, that it's like a boxcar that leaves the station at the beginning of the year and hopefully gets to its destination at the end of the year. And this year, your boxcar train is carrying the comprehensive plan package. You can also add other boxes onto that train, including these two rezones. So the first, the first box that you can decide to move forward this year is a rezone along Martin Way. And this is one that would be going from low-density residential to the mixed-high-density corridor zoning designation. Lacey Planning Commission is a reminder, they recommended approval as well as our planning commission. It's currently used for trailer sales in the front and it's vacant in the back. There's just a zoom in of what that would look like, so it would be about seven acres added to the mixed-high-density corridor zoning designation. The big difference between that zone and its current zone is that MHDC allows an expanded expanded range of commercial uses and housing uses, or dense housing uses, which is in alignment with the Martin Way corridor study and all the work that we've been engaging with the City of Lacey, inner-city transit, and TRPC over the last few years. Any questions on this one before we move to the second one?
I know you said it. What makes he say about this?
Yeah. So Lacey Planning Commission did recommend approval. It was unanimous because they do think it aligns with that Martin Way corridor study. However, they did have concerns about trailer sales just expanding onto the back portion of that lot or development happening on that site, because it is going to be one of the biggest vacant sites along Martin Way. Development along that site not really achieving that that full vision that they have for Martin Way. So those are synopsis of their comments. Our planning commission shared a lot of those concerns, that there's really no requirement for housing, even though you can develop pretty dense housing along that corridor. And so that's why you see a mixed vote from our planning commission, six to four. The other vote that Thurston County Planning Commission took was a recommendation to the board to consider docketing an item, or at least including a more holistic look at the whole Martin Way corridor as part of our Lacey joint plan update, so that is something that we're going to be doing anyway next year. We've got to do housing updates to all of our joint plans for UGAs. And so their, their suggestion was, as part of that joint plan update, why not take a look at the whole corridor instead of just one individual site? If we're really trying to support housing and implement the Martin Way corridor study, let's expand it. So that's why you see two motions up there from our planning commission.
Okay, we're taking these like one.
I think that probably makes most sense because they're in very different parts of the county and very different rezoned requests.
So, okay, does anyone want to? The goal here is just to ask follow-up questions from the board, you know?
Yep, as follow-up questions are slated to have a public hearing November 12th, so that's when you get to hear from the community. And you can decide to move it forward into the end-of-the-year package for updating the comp plan, or you can decide to hold off.
It would be great, as you get up to speed on this topic, Commissioners, any questions or concerns that you let Ashley know either now or several days to weeks, so that she can answer those and prepare you for the hearing that's about to come.
I will say, we did have a number of neighbors show up at the Planning Commission public hearing, mostly folks who live in the low-density residential area that surrounds or the southern portion of the slot. And the concerns that they raised were regarding transportation. There is, there are two access points to this site. And so one is sort of at the south end, which would go through a low-density residential neighborhood, and the other one's at the north end along Martin Way. So we did try to address that in the environmental review with conditions limiting access on the south end to address those concerns. But just as a
North is up on this map, right?
Yep, yep. North is just straight up.
So how would people act? Like, you said there's trailer sales north of that parcel?
On the north side, so if.
How are people getting into it?
This is a split-zone parcel, so it actually is attached to this here. So your trailer sales are in that north piece right along Martin Way, Trailer Boss, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it. And then in the south part of that site is just vacant. It had trees and some old houses on it, and those were removed for an expansion of trailer sales. And this, this rezone request actually came in as a response to a code compliance issue, because you can't expand the trailer cells into a low-density residential zone.
But it was confusing because the property owner, since it was one parcel and split-zoned, he thought that he could do the trailer cells on the whole thing. Turns out he couldn't. And so part of that process was for him to apply for this rezone so that he could do the thing that he's doing on the front parcel, the part of the parcel with the entire parcel. So he's aligning, if you go to that other picture, where they're all pink.
I think it's understandable why he was confused.
Yep.
And we looked back, way back into the documents, trying to figure out why it was split-zoned. We could not figure out why that was done decades ago.
Sorry, I was delayed and then I. And so this, this request for rezone came from?
From the property owner.
Yep, and there's no guarantees with rezones, just so you're aware, we don't, we don't indicate when they submit a rezone that they will definitely get one granted, but it is a pathway for them to come into compliance.
How common is it to have like something like that?
Split parcel?
It's not, it's not super common. I think when we dug in, we were able to find an old boundary line adjustment. Wasn't clear if that was what happened. So sometimes it's created because a property owner moves lines, their zoning doesn't change. In other cases, you just have parcels like the next one where there's a proposal to split-zone it to protect critical areas. So they come about for different reasons, but it is hard.
I'd never seen one until we had these, this one come in and then the request for the next one, so not very often.
Yeah. We try to avoid it.
Because it creates confusion for people decades from now.
Yeah.
But you'll see, even with urban growth area boundaries, sometimes they will cut through the middle of a parcel if it's a large parcel, and you don't necessarily want the line going like this. So it does happen, but planners try really hard not to create this kind of confusion for folks.
And the way it's zoned now, low-density, is what? You can put like some houses on it?
Up to six unit, up to six dwelling units per acre, which is, you know, if you look at the whole corridor. Sorry, trying to. Ah, I think I might have over. Apologies. Anyway, it is, it is kind of this red ribbon is the MHDC along the whole corridor. And there, it goes straight from that red ribbon, ah, there it is, to low-density residential.
And so the neighbors on the south side were the ones behind the clock?
Yep, they had concerns about transportation and about, you know, a large-scale commercial development. Because MHDC is a zone that allows a broad range of commercial and residential uses, but it doesn't require residential or it doesn't require commercial, so you could have, you know, a large commercial facility going here, so.
Eight acres.
It's eight acres, which is, it's a big parcel for, for that corridor. So it does create economic development opportunities along Martin Way. And, you know, with, there's no specific development proposals, so people are concerned about what could be, it's not part of a rezone process.
But I thought you said that, um, I mean, you're, I understand what you're saying about like, we don't really control what will be there. You could say what we allow, well, you know, so. But, but it sounds like in this case, we kind of know what will be there in the short run, which is expansion of the trailer sale. And is that, and is that, is that something that people were, is that what they'd like to see? Because they don't want to see a big commercial industrial housing thing, or is that, or were there people that didn't want to see that? That were specifically opposed to having more space for the trailer sales?
I think that it's a it's a little bit more nuanced. People didn't necessarily want to see an expansion of the trailer sales because they didn't really like the fact that this came in through the code compliance track. So they linked those two things together, like, why would you?
There's already some negative experiences attached to the compliance issue.
That, that some of those neighbors were ones that had called and said, hey, this property owner is cutting down trees and removing houses. And so I think it's just a little bit more nuanced, and it's hard for me to separate what their concerns are, but.
That, this is going to be the ongoing conversation about this UGA area. Because when you look at how it's situated right now, you have a corridor and adjacent to the corridor, houses. But that corridor is allowed to develop into different uses than residential. And quite frankly, we wanted to from a tax, a property, I mean, a sales tax basis. And I believe if City of Lacey annexes it, they're going to want to do the same thing. It is one of the few areas in this county that can actually develop. And I think there's just going to be a continued intersection with folks who are on the other side of that pink and the yellow, it's residential. And buying so close to an area that is, I would say, underdeveloped currently to what it should and could be for the best, highest use, being one of our major corridors and running parallel to the I-5 freeway. If, for whatever reason, the City of Lacey does not annex it, the county really needs to have a plan for that space that utilizes that property because it's one of our redevelopment zones.
Yeah, thank you. And building on that, that's why the hard work of the planning commission is so important, that they're wrestling with just those issues. So when they take a vote and recommend the rezone as applied for, it's having thought of those things, as well as Lacey's planning commission with their approval.
This is pretty motivated to talk more about the annexation.
And if it was developed, highest best use, and we had, you know, Class C B office building, and we had micro economies for healthcare and light industrial already developed, and people then bought their homes, people wouldn't think anything about it. But when you have storefronts that face Martin Way and then the backs of their property kind of go into just open areas, it gives a false sense that it's open space and will remain open space for.
What's the hot pink block?
It's like, I don't remember the exact acronym, but it's like their, their central business, their core central business. It require, it allows for actually less dense housing than the mixed-high-density corridor.
It's like Walmart and Safeway and that whole thing back there, yeah.
Home Depot.
It, it's going to be their, their work commercial.
Right, the, the street that goes up and down to the is Marvin?
Yeah, where that little box is, is right across from like Del Taco.
There's lots of little boxes.
The box that we're talking about is, oh, not the pink, oh, not there.
Oh, that is.
Hot pink, that's.
That's Marvin?
Yeah. The rack is the green part, right, yeah.
Okay.
So it, it's your more intense commercial.
It's any corner from Winko.
See, general, it's like general commercial, thank you.
The backside of it is Tanglewild. That's why I was just looking it up on my phone, and the backside of that is that whole Tanglewild.
Little, like, where there's slightly bigger parcels underneath it, to the right of the orange block.
Yep.
And from a redevelopment standpoint, the idea being that, that whole corridor could, and to maximize sales tax into the county and, and if the City of Lacey annexes that, should be high-performing businesses and points of service because it's on a major corridor.
Yeah, I didn't realize, I actually didn't realize we had UGA that close to Hawks Prairie, what I call Hawks Prairie.
Oh, yeah.
Like, that's pretty close. If you're Nikki, I see your hands.
I, I was just going to ask, has Lacey brought up anything about a development agreement for this property?
They have not to date, Commissioner Mihia.
And this is, my perspective, Commissioner Mihia, is through the conversation of annexing, we really need to create a vision for that space because the uses today, I guarantee are not compatible with best and highest use. When we look at trailer, folks are selling trailers, mobile home, lots of used car lots, small independent strip malls. Not saying that any of that is negative or wrong or bad, but it's definitely not a master plan, best and highest use. So when you look at Martin Corridor, and you take Martin all the way up past the freeway and see what Lacey has developed, it gives you an idea of how to mix amenities, residential, commercial, and points of service to create and spur local economies for local communities. That's effectively, I believe, what the whole Martin Way corridor needs. I'm excited that we have an Economic Development Program Manager, on his second day, watching and hearing this conversation. Because that's the opportunity I believe we have here, and to do it in a way that we bring the community along so that it's not piecemeal and ad hoc. Just some thoughts. It's exciting. To me, Martin Way Corridor is probably one of the most exciting spots in the county for potential rezone.
And in terms of that bigger conversation with the community or with the board, because, oh, you know, the Martin Way Corridor study has been this long, ongoing thing, but it hasn't really been baked, fully baked into our long-range planning documents or the vision. And there will be an opportunity next year with the joint plan updates, specifically focused on housing, to weave in the conversation that you all are having today about Martin Way.
Okay, well, that's some good information. Anything else on this item before we move to the second item?
Okay. Oh, I overshot. I need to be patient.
Sit a couple seats in, it might be the reach.
I think it's just a, it's a delay when you. Turned on, correct? Yep, it was working before. The, so the second one, we're zooming to Little Rock, southwest of Tom Water. So this is the Black Lake Quarry rezone proposal. As the name suggests, this site is currently used as a gravel mine. It's approximately 270 acres, and the applicant is proposing to rezone it from rural 120, so one house per 20 acres, to rural resource industrial. What that essentially would allow is an expanded range of industrial uses. I'd say mining is pretty industrial, but what the RRI zone really supports are those natural resource industry, like processors and manufacturers to support like our ag forestry and mining sectors here in the county. So the original proposal was to rezone the whole parcel, the, the whole 270 acres, including portions of the site adjacent to the Black River to rural resource industrial. This is kind of nice because it's an aerial. After hearing the city concerns and the planning commission conversations, the applicant has since adjusted their proposal. And now they're looking at only rezoning 247 acres from R120 to that rural resource industrial zone, which would maintain the acreage closest to the Black River and really down slope from the rest of the gravel mine in that R120 zone.
Let me ask real quick, the, the, like, so what's, what confused me the first time we saw this is like the aqua band. What does that represent? The, the big aqua?
On either side?
The river is a little ribbon, but there's a humongous aqua-colored band, and is that the flood zone?
Like, it's the buffer, it's basically the critical, like, the extent of the, the buffers along.
Why would it be like, if that were the buffer, why would it be, there'd be no buffer on the left side?
Yeah, so it's probably, most likely flood, flood plain. And that is way down, like, down slope from where the mine is. So apologies for, for the confusion, yes, it would be the, the flood plain, which includes some organ-spotted frog habitat in the most sensitive environmental areas. And then as you, as you switch into the, the hatched area, there's a pretty big topographical change there.
Like, there's a bluff or something that goes up?
I don't know if it's like vertical bluff, but it's, it's enough of a topographical change that you're not going to see, see the flood plain extend there.
And what's the red delineation, the red dots?
Right through the middle of the.
The line that they're trying to show that the, the barrier essentially over the R120 zoning would end, and then transition.
Within that parcel, the yellow is the parcel, and within that parcel, the red line delineates where the RR1 would end, and it would go to like critical.
It would essentially staying in its current zoning of R120, so they're proposing to split-zone the parcel.
Okay, we're just learning about that.
Yeah, they want to split-zone it, and in their mind, it addresses community concerns, because R120 is a less intensive zone. You wouldn't be able to build any kind of industrial uses in that area. Our critical areas ordinance, along with our habitat conservation program, already provide a high level of protection in this area. But it's nice to see, I think, for the community, a zoning line on the map that delineates where industrial can occur and where low-intensity residential would occur.
That's still like a half a mile from the river?
I think it was a quarter, a quarter mile from the nearest property line of the gravel mine to the, the edge of the Black River. But I can, I can confirm that, be sure it's quarter mile.
And then you're going to go, maybe go into this, but like, I was hoping you could explain RRI versus light, like, RRI versus LI.
The.
The proposals go to RRI.
Yep.
And like, when we were, when we were, when we were dealing with Grand Mount, we were talking about LI, right?
Yeah, so light industrial doesn't exist in rural county. Light industrial is really a zoning that you're going to need sewer and water to support the kind of uses that would exist on that site. Rural resource industrial is, is like your, it really is the industrial uses that you would think of to support your forestry, ag, and mining. So, you know, a lumber processing facility, maybe storage for ag products, some kind of cannery for, to support the ag industry. And so it's going to be less intensive in terms of its need for sewer and water, because you're not going to have sewer and water out to the site. I will say, the site does have water rights, though, which, and it has power, because it's a current mine, there are your, your general suite of utilities already available to this site. And any kind of use they establish would have to develop some kind of industrial, like, onsite septic system.
But.
Can I ask, can I just ask the follow-ups just on the water rights? It's like, what is, like, what importance does the water rights play in this?
Just means that they have access to water. Otherwise, they would be reliant on permit-exempt wells. And you can't use permit-exempt wells for industrial uses. So what they can do with their water rights that they have for their mine is convert them and use them for an industrial purpose. Where that helps are things, things as simple as public fire life and safety, fire flow for a building if they build a warehouse. You have to have a substantial amount of water, and you're not going to be able to get that from a permit-exempt well.
So it just adds flexibility to what they can do with the property.
So they can do a broader, broader suite of those supporting uses for ag forestry and mining.
But what, like, I'm trying on the outer end, like, what can't you do in, like, you know, what, what is RRI constrain you and you couldn't do? Like, can you put just a, a general warehouse like we see in Tom Water or something, or in Hawks Prairie there?
Warehouse distribution facilities are specifically not allowed on, in RRI when they're this far away from the highway, so.
Right, because there's that condition that it has to be within quarter mile?
It's a half-mile proximity to a railroad or an interchange, and this site is way further away from the highway than that. So it provides a more expansive list than you, than mining, but you can't do your, your Costco warehouse at this site.
Okay, but then what about other, what other types of industrial uses? Okay, but then what about other, what other types of industrial uses besides a warehouse, because that's, that's knocked out by that provision of our code, would be not allowed, like, like, I mean, what, what are the, what's the, what's the box that RRI creates? Like, and what's outside that box? Is it a, a chemical plant or, I don't know, you know, all that. I mean, you're talking about, you're like, you're saying, well, you could do lumber or you could do, you know, ag related something. Okay, but then what can't you do? Like, what's, what's not allowed in RRI besides a warehouse that's not close enough to the freeway?
And so you're like, you're, you're general manuf- like intense manufacturing, um, unless it's in support of one of those other industries. It's a pretty limited zone. Um, and if I, Anna, would you mind joining me and pulling up? Thank you. I just wanna, I just wanna get.
I, I'm just not remembering all the different pieces.
Fine. And I don't have it completely memorized, so it's always helpful to just. Thank you. Yeah.
I bring this up just because, uh, as we were saying in the last one, like, in a lot of cases, the zoning decision has really nothing to do with what, you know, depending on how broad it is. Like, I remember in Grand Mount, there was like Arterio Commercial. That one was like super broad. It could be housing. It could be commercial. It could be, you know, it, it would seem like, y- you have no idea what really will actually transpire. But if a zoning definition is more constrained, then you have a little bit more of an idea of what might be coming there. So I just wanted to kind of get a feel of that for RRI.
Yeah, so, um, as you drive along I five, you know, around Baytown is where we have some of this RRI and you'll see things like storage or repair of heavy vehicles, heavy equipment, crane operator kind of equipment that is really hard to accommodate in a, an industrial zone in a city. So it would, you'd be able to do stuff like that. So, storage of large construction vehicles, um, heavy equipment. For ag, you've got feed stores, farm management services, sale, storage and manufacturing of fertilizer, irrigation system, sales, repair and storage, vet clinics and wholesale distribution of animal, animal feeds, fertilizers, pesticides and seed. For forestry, you've got mills for producing wood products. You've got manufacturing wood containers and products and prefab wood buildings and components. And then for minerals, you've got stone, marble and granite monument works, manufacturing a brick pile of terracotta, clay products or concrete products.
You're reading straight from Thurston County Code twenty point two nine point zero two zero permitted uses for.
Yep, and that's, that's pretty much it. There's a few smaller uses that are allowed.
Which we can send.
So the way it's structured is like, there's just kind of a list of, like, it's like a list of things you can do.
A list of permitted uses.
You can't do it?
There is a, when we send out the list of permitted uses, we could also highlight the special uses that are allowed, but they are only allowed with hearings examiner approval and a public hearing. So there's an, a number of considerations in addition to the limitations or standards that are already in the zone to establish one of the special uses, but we can send just a full list. But it is a very limited zone. So you're not seeing your large scale manufacturing. You're not seeing warehouse distribution. Um, a lot of the things that you've seen like Hawks Prairie or the Tom Water UGA or on the Costco warehouse.
And then I think it's probably useful just for all commissioners, but like the fact that there's gravel mining going on and this is a R one twenty, like, is that just something that's happened before there was zoning? Or like, how does it, how does that work? That, that, that there was approval for this mining operation in, on a, on a residential zone?
Yeah, the way mining works in Thurston County is, um, there's an overlay district. So essentially where the good gravelly soils exists, there is an overlay and property owners that want to establish a mine who want to go through the long laborious process to establish a mine can do that.
Anywhere, if it's.
If, if it's within that mining overlay.
Anywhere within the good identified soils that are good for gravel.
And I will say that it is, in my career, it's the most difficult permitting process of any outright permitted use I've seen. I mean, it's a, pretty much a full environmental impact statement. That was in your mind.
Just because you're on the property doesn't mean you're going to be able to meet all the requirements. It is very regulated.
Yep.
And there's a lot of work someone would have to do to accomplish that.
To, to create a new gravel mine, isn't it?
This is an old historic one. This is not a new one.
And, and this proposal converts it from a gravel mine. It is, it's, it's in current use?
It, they would be allowed to continue with their gravel mining in the RRI zone, but it'll, it gives them flexibility rather than going below the water table and causing more environmental.
But right now it's permitted use.
It's.
Going to, my understanding is it's going to continue to be a hole in the ground that they extract gravel and resources from and they can pretty much do it di- down as deep as they want.
They.
Up until a point.
Yeah, they, they have, uh, they're allowed to go way below the water table with their DNR permit.
And so we, they either continue with the gravel mine operation and dig as deep as they want into the water table, or we convert this over to RRI and allow this different use, which may be more appealing to the community and to the landowner and to the county. And and then it won't be dug into a giant hole in the ground that is, is probably going to be there forever and would be a higher, better use for the community.
That, that is what the property owner has indicated is, is his desire is to be able to establish some.
Allowed to mine, they're going to dig down as deep as they want and then it just gets a fence around it for the next hundred years and it's a brownfield site that nobody can ever use and it's dead to the community. Is that?
There are reclamation plans, um, that are required as part of the DNR permit. Um, and those were shared with, with the planning commission, but they're years and years and years out. And who, who really knows what happens between now and when reclamation would potentially occur?
We do understand from the applicant that, to, to share for his point that he is at a tipping point where the applicant believes that, uh, if it doesn't, if he doesn't have the flexibility to use the land in a new way for this new zone, then going deeper will make it not possible to do that, to your point. That's what the applicant.
It makes it more economically and feasible than converted.
I asked how many acres of RRI we have?
Yep. Yeah, so for those of you who were, um, here, the county, uh, commissioned the completion of an industrial land study that was done in, done and presented December twenty twenty-three. Um, and that study assessed, um, the supply of industrial lands throughout Thurston County, whether they were located in UGAs, rural incorporated or the city. So it was a really comprehensive look at our industrial land base. Um, and so what it found in this, this is slightly old data, but I don't think it's changed much. Um, is that we've got three hundred and thirty-seven acres of industrial zone land in rural county, so existing outside of UGAs. Only a hundred and eight acres of that is considered developable once you take into consideration critical areas and other constraints. Of that a hundred and eight, sorry, I'm sort of drilling down, zero of those parcels are sized twenty acres or larger. And so as, you know, as I listed out the kinds of uses that would be allowed in RRI, a lot of those, you do need a larger site and that was something that the industrial land study hit on is that for a lot of the industrial uses that we would want to attract to Thurston County or anywhere in Western Washington, that the larger the site, the more flexibility um, folks have in trying to accommodate those industrial uses. So we have, we have no sites in rural county that are developable and in the range, the size range of this site.
What about with the water until you?
So when you're looking at rural, rural rural, a lot of those, I mean, they're not going to have sewer and water. The fact that this site actually has power and some of those other utilities is a bonus. Um, and the fact that it has water rights. They didn't do a water rights analysis. It's really difficult to do a water rights analysis as part of the industrial land study. But the fact that this site has water rights and is large enough to accommodate a more industrial, industrial sized septic system would mean that it is, it's pretty well served for rural county.
I, I went out of that, the president made some remark yesterday about, uh, shipping in Argentinian beef. And so like I went down the rabbit hole yesterday, like trying to understand what he was talking about and and it, and it brought me back to a study that the EDC did in twenty sixteen on Thurston County's ag economy. And if, maybe when you send out the zoning stuff, I can send this to you and you can send it out to everybody. It's on the EDC's website. And, and I reread that and it, and I mean, it just spells out that for the last decade, we've known for longer than that, we've known that like these types of sites are rare and don't exist to support the ag industry. And it's preventing like, I think it's called vertical integration. And so you've got all of our local uh, farmers, they can produce things, but there's no facilities anywhere for them to process, for them to store, for them to ship. And it's not just a Thurston County thing. It's a nationwide thing. And that's why they're talking about uh, having to ship in beef from Argentina and the, you know, the US cow herd is like at its lowest it's ever been in the, you know, in, in recent history. And so like, we're missing all these supply chain points. And that's why it's really, really important that we, I feel that we look for opportunities like this where we can take a giant hole in the ground and convert it into a higher, better use that's going to support our ag economy. So, I mean, this is exciting. I, I, you know, I hope that we can move it forward. And it's, I think it's incredibly relevant to like what's going on today.
Thank you. I had a, another question about coming med. So the, you said DNR granted them a permit to basically dig under the, you know, continue to mine under the water table. And I, I'm just wondering the, I'm, as I'm thinking about that, just see, the river is right there and and so I, I'm just surprised that that was permitted.
I, I would have to go digging into their mine permit to understand the, the s- the substantive.
When was this?
It's a DNR.
It's a DNR.
It's a DNR permit, yeah. And, and so like, I, I'm just wondering, you said it was, was a historical mine. When was this? When did it become a mine, I guess? When, when was that? And I'm just curious about, about those points.
We can, um, I know that the, the property owner, um, Michael Parsons did provide um, background information about the DNR permit. We can provide that to you. I don't want to miss, misspeak.
Another thing is like what you mentioned, the reclamation requirements and I'm, I've tangled with a few of these and like across the county and the, my understanding is like the, I don't know about the, this particular site, but in general, like the reclamation requirements that a mine has are they're kind of, what's the right way to say it? Like, they're kind of minimal. I mean, they, they have to, like, it doesn't mean that the land is restored back to being able to be done, all the different things that it could have been done before. It does not like restoring it back to like before they started mining. It's like.
Slope changes.
Yeah, they just like. They kind of even it out so it's not dangerous. Like, it's really kind of a minimal kind of, I mean, so when people are thinking about, well, you know, like if you're thinking, oh, let's just, it would be better if we let the mining run its full course and then have, and then make them do the full reclamation of land. Like, that's not really what I think some people, I've talked to people in the past on other projects where they had a misconception about what that meant. Is that, is that consistent with your understanding?
I, I think so. Um, we did some, we did some research into it with the planning commissions, at the planning commission's request and, and brought forward, um, some examples of reclaim sites and some of them are amazing. They're usually ones that have been, um, let's say reclaimed by a public entity. So think of Chambers Bay and that beautiful park that's there. Um, and so you've got, you've got a, a public entity that's coming in and partnering or, you know, to really turn it into an amenity. Um, there's also, you know, I actually went to a reclaimed mine over in Spokane where the conservation district has gone in and that's their new site, but it's a hard rock mine. It's not a gravel mine. So I really think it's specific to the site and specific to what that vision is for the site and how much community benefit.
Okay. Is there more on this one? The planning commission was six to three on this one.
Yep, um, and we, we had one absent and they did want me to share that they would have voted for it rather than against it. So if they'd been there, it would have been six four.
Might have been six to four, okay. So what, like, when you say supporting findings, environment, findings of the, of the planning commissions to request? Go back to slide if you would. Supporting findings, meaning supporting the decision not to recommend it. Environmental concerns, proximity, lack of, and conflict with zoning intent. What does that last one mean?
The conflict with the existing zoning, the R one to twenty was intended to, i- in their mind, um, have this site develop at a fairly low intensity because of its proximity to the Black River. But the, the planning commissioners who dissented were like, but it's a mine. It's not currently a vacant site, um, that the mine itself had, you know, causes more environmental degradation than really any of the uses that would be allowed in the RRI zone.
Let's make sure we get the timeline right. So the applicant came in for a full rezone of all the parcels. He heard the conversation with the planning commission and then submitted the updated. Where you can see on that picture, it's not going into the critical areas. So the planning commission didn't get a chance to vote on the updated uh, application. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Josh.
Can you explain the argument that you just said prior to Josh's comments? And thank you for that comment, Josh, it was good.
The, the zoning intent. The, a lot of the, a lot of the folks who commented on this proposal weren't necessarily neighbors. They were environmentalists. Um, and they shared that the R one to twenty zone is really the zone that you use when you don't want to have development happen um, in proximity to sensitive environmental areas.
Wouldn't an environmentalist be in favor of converting the mine into a less impactful use?
I, I.
That's what the planning commission.
Yeah, they, they, they're really holding on to it being reclaimed in open space for some kind of like wildlife habitat use.
But that's not.
What the property owner.
Yeah, it's not going to happen. It's just going to be a bigger, deeper hole with a fence around it and a bunch of nasty land.
But the, the planning commission felt that having it be a mine and having it be reclaimed at some point in the future would be better and expanding the list of uses.
With the application that they.
I'm sorry.
With the application that they saw.
Well, with the application that, that, that they saw.
And di- and di- and just, did they, did their discussion get into the like three hundred and thirty-seven acres, only a hundred and eight developable, zero of, of those parcels are more than twenty acres with the what? Like, did that, did they talk about that element of, of the, you know, the, the broader?
We tried to introduce it. I think in general, the planning commission is not thinking about economic development. I don't want to speak out of turn, but it has not been an interest of theirs to, you know, better understand sort of the, the broader, broader picture.
That's unfortunate.
Around economic development.
I, I think that like this type of zoning is, it's, to me, like, I told you, I went down the rabbit hole yesterday and I, like, this type of, like, the lack of supply chain uh, infrastructure to me is like a public safety issue. And if we're, you know, like having to rely on, you know, like four, you know, just for example, four meat processing plants in the entire country to provide all our meat, that makes us vulnerable to a lot of, uh, well, to the whole system breaking when we're relying on one, you know, baby formula place in, you know, Missouri to produce all the baby formula. And then there's a pandemic that happens. That breaks the whole country. And so like this type of zoning to support ag is, in my mind, vitally important. I think that's the opportunity commissioners that we have in looking at how zo- zoning is the platform by which development happens. And when there's, um, there's a vision and direction for where that is headed, starts to inform these decisions on a broader scale and helps to create a broader picture of what's trying to be accomplished.
Anything else on this item? A public hearing in November.
Yep, public hearing in November and apologies it, because of the board calendar, that is November twelfth for your public hearing. Um, and this is one of those boxes that you get to decide to put on that boxcar and take it into the station um, by the end of the year. Um, this would get bundled, at least from a decision standpoint, with the comprehensive plan update, which is tentatively scheduled for December sixteenth. So there will be time after the public hearing for us to come back if you. So there will be time after the public hearing for us to come back if you want to have further discussion or have questions. On these two rezones.
And this again is the staff's intent is to ensure that there. Aren't surprises as we head into the public hearing, but we can never. Uh, fully know what the public's going to say. So that you're prepared to have an understanding of what questions are going to be asked. And so that. Can have a full conversation of where the board wants to go. So you have recommendations from the planning commission, but the board. Is responsible for the larger picture as it relates to the community.
Anything else inside?
Um, really appreciate you spending the time. Thank you.
Mr. Items. I have one.
One. I'll go last.
Okay, um. We didn't have, looking at Madam Clerk, we didn't have, uh, like. Boards and commissions, like sort of standing items up here.
We don't have any items to address today.
Okay, so, uh, I'd like to bring up the housing authority because, um, I've got communication from the. President of the Housing Authority Board that. It's a pretty small board. I can't remember how many seats there are, but one of their commissioners moved out of state. Another one, like they have a seat that's assigned to somebody that's like receiving public assistance. That person is able, has improved their life and no longer has to receive public assistance. So they're down potentially two seats and. The request from, um. President was, would the board contemplate sliding the. The public assistance seat person to the open seat, um, potentially since that is open as well. And then. If not that, there is, they said there was an app, that they did receive an application from somebody that they thought was qualified. So. Between those two possibilities, they were hoping that we could fill the open seat. They'd still leave the, would still leave the seat open for the person receiving public assistance, but it would give them a better chance of me, not missing quorum or whatever when somebody's not available. So. I guess I'm wondering, have you, since you don't have that teed up for us, is, have you received the application that I'm referring to?
I, uh, we've received a couple of applications, the recruitment that we did. For one of their vacant seeds, those just last week. And so we plan to bring those to you tomorrow. After sharing them also with the housing authority.
We'll discuss this tomorrow.
But did you receive outreach from the, the board about making a switch?
I haven't received that.
Maybe if we can get the contact information so they can.
Yeah, I'll give them that. So I mean, if the, if the commissioners can see the application and then consider the potential other candidate as a possibility, then. I just want to make sure that this was teed up and we could get it addressed as soon as we can.
Did they just address it to you or did they address it to the clerk also?
All right, cool. That was mine. Just make sure that doesn't ultimately crack. Commissioner Grant.
Okay, um, so I, I'm gonna read a statement or something that I put together. I just want to take, um, it's kind of long, so bear with me. And I'm gonna read it from beginning to end. Um. So I just want to take a moment today to speak directly to the public and to my fellow commissioners, um, uh, about the breakdown in transparency, accuracy. And collaboration that has occurred during this year's budget process. Over the past several weeks, I've received dozens, more than dozens of communications from judges. Elected officials, department heads and community partners, um, and they're all saying the same thing. This process is chaotic, opaque and deeply concerning. Uh, let's start with the facts. So on. October thirteenth, presiding judge John Skinder and the entire board of judges formally objected to the board's approved budget cuts. Cuts that target the courts and the clerk's office with over one third of all general fund reductions totaling more than three point six million. Their letter states, and I quote, "This process does not conform to the board's stated value of transparency." They warned that these cuts violate our constitutional duty to maintain a functioning court. And that the results will be delayed trials, canceled jury proceedings and victims left waiting for protection orders. Judge Skinder also requested that we pause these cuts and hold dedicated budget work sessions where the budget is the only topic. Then came the letter from our county clerk, Linda Inlow, who faces a nineteen point five percent budget reduction over one point one million. Her office would lose up to a quarter of its staff, including those who assist domestic violence victims and self-represented families in family court. She warns that these cuts will eliminate essential public access to justice and could even expose the county to lawsuits. Next, from auditor Mary Hall, the elected official that's legally responsible for preparing the county's preliminary budget. Her email says plainly that the preliminary budget is limited in its reliability in quotes. She identified twenty million discrepancies, two million unreconciled difference in the sheriff's office rates and multiple personnel errors. Including one, the understated department salaries. And she was given less than one day of access to the budget system to verify the figures. That is not transparency. That is not accountability. This is unacceptable in a county government that manage hundreds of millions of tax barrier dollars. Meanwhile, we received letters from the bar association, family education and support services and multiple departments. All pleading for communication, for clarity and for fairness. Instead, what they've received are mixed messages, late information and unrealistic timeline that now gives us less than four weeks. Between publication of the preliminary budget and the final adoption. The public deserves a process that's transparent. Our employees deserve data that they can trust. And the courts, a co-equal branch of government deserve respect. I'm asking this board to acknowledge, uh, and the request. And to commit a dedicated series of budget work sessions before we move one step further. Because if we continue down this path, ignoring the warnings of our own constitutional, constitutional officers. We're not just risking lawsuits or errors. We're risking the public's trust in Thurston County government, and that's not something that we can afford to lose.
Commissioner Grant.
I'll just say that that statement had a lot of fallacies on it. And we also received another message from district court saying that this was the most transparent. And they were grateful for the communication back and forth. I've heard from the coroner, I've heard from other offices thanking us for the collaboration and. And just as I've heard from the treasurer's office, um, and so I've heard from other offices as well thanking us. For how transparent this year actually was. And, um, this was. Nothing new. We've been discussing, this has been a year-long process of budget conversations and. You know, we asked for alternate proposals. No one came in with alternate proposals. And so. We have delayed, we started this process over two months ago trying to. Throw spaghetti at the wall, try to come up with different alternatives, uh, try to cover that thirty six million dollar gap. I've reached out to the thirty nine counties. I have thirty nine articles from thirty nine counties of all the cuts that they're going to have to make. Pierce and King County, while they're not having to make cuts this year, they're digging so far into their reserves. That by twenty twenty seven, they're looking at making really deep cuts. And so when we talk about. Being collaborative, I think that the board has bent over backwards. Some of the financial decisions to cover that thirty six million dollar gap. I am not one hundred percent comfortable with, but I am doing it. And I'm voting for it to try to cover that gap that has gone mainly to offices and to the courts. So. Just like we are hearing from some who are taking cuts that the process was not transparent. I'm hearing from others that the process was transparent. Um, and so I'll just, I'll leave my comments up there for now.
I, I had come the same comments. I, I've, I've heard, I've heard all the, all those different things. There are people that are happy, there's people that are unhappy. Uh, district court sent us a very nice letter saying this is the most open and transparent budget process that they've witnessed. You know, they're. So, so I, I mean, I would push back against that. This is, we've been doing this all year long. The reason that we're down to four weeks left is because at multiple, multiple decision points. Throughout this process, uh, we've had commissioners that say, that have said, well, I'm not ready to make a decision. I need more information. We get that information, we come back, uh, well, I'm not ready to make a decision. I need more information. We get that information. We set up multiple meetings with the budget team, with staff, uh, we convene. Uh, special budget workshops for commissioners. Sometimes they don't show up. Uh, and then they come to the next meeting saying, I didn't get the information or I got the information at the last minute that we've all had for weeks. And then they say, I need more information before I make a decision. So we kept kicking the can down the road, trying to accommodate indecisiveness. When we've got decisions that need to be made. Everybody has been included. We've had multiple, multiple open meetings where anybody could attend. And we've got staff that are saying this is the most open and transparent process that they've witnessed. There are departments or offices, I always confuse the two, that did not participate in good faith. Well, I mean, I think they, they were participating in good faith, but when they came in and they said, we can't make a budget cut. And our answer was, we're going to all have to tighten the belt. And we ask you kindly to help us figure out what that is, because if you lead it to us, leave it to us, you're not gonna like the results. Cause we, we're not experts in your shop. And there, when that didn't happen, we had. To make choices and we had to make decisions. And no, that's what the art of compromise is, everybody walks away unhappy. And yes, the, this is a difficult budget, but these are difficult times and we have a mandate. Just like every other elected official has a mandate, but our mandate is to make sure that we pass a balanced budget. And I don't even think we're doing that with, with, with the proposal that we've got on the table, because we're making a lot of assumptions. That we should not be making regarding revenue that, that may or may not come in. So we need to learn to live within our means, which means we need to cut expenses. And we, and if it's not, if it's not being done with the scalpel, I said this, you can, you. Everybody's sitting on the other side of the table. They can get a scalpel out and they can try to make those cuts. Or they can leave it to us, but we, we, we don't have scalpels. We have a chainsaw and it's gonna get messy. So that's. That's what I gotta say about that.
Commissioner Klaus.
You can go ahead.
I was just gonna make a couple of comments. I. I feel like in every conversation I've had with all the folks that Commissioner Grant outlined. What's been lost is that a thirty six million budget, thirty six million dollar budget gap is now ten point eight million. That was, those were, that, that wasn't just pulling low hanging fruit off trees. Those were really, really difficult decisions with questionable assumptions as Commissioner. Corneille said, violating our county's, um, violating our county's budget principles. A document I drafted with Robin Campbell in twenty twenty, was very proud of. And those were, that was done to help every office and department in this county. I. Then it's been very disheartening to see everyone going to war over the division of that last ten point eight million dollars. It's ten point eight million dollars instead of thirty six million. And that was done to help everyone, everyone. Um, so, you know. It's. I, I, I don't want to say more because I'll get pretty upset, but you know, like something Commissioner Mahia said was. About, you know, we start looking at other counties, are we doing something wrong here? Every single county of our size. Is facing more cut, if not the same or more. Spokane, as an example. In order to get to a fifteen percent cut over two years, spent fifty four point seven million dollars of fund balance. So Skagit announced a twenty percent across the board general fund cut. On and on and on, Grays Harbor, Kitsap, Yakima is eighteen percent general fund cut. We've gotten ours down to much lower than that. And I think that we, decisions we made are gonna make things harder for everyone in twenty twenty seven. But we continue to stretch in every direction to try to reduce the impact of this. Um, so. That's been the approach the board's taken. This stuff about process, I cannot even understand what's being said. We have been working on this, this has been. We started this in August, like usually we don't even start digging into the budget until October. And now we've been working since August, like I've done nothing but, but field calls, go over spreadsheets, talk to elected officials. And, and so I don't understand. I do understand in a sense, because, because of the budget gap, this is a completely different. Process and, and task that we've had to do and it's hard for everyone. So it is new in that sense. But is it not transparent? Or I mean, I, that's just, that's nonsense from my perspective. So. Um, and district court, yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't believe Judge Buckley is. Is lying to us when he's been around here for thirty years and said, this is the best process he's ever seen for Thurston County budget. But, you know, obviously perspectives differ based on the result that, how they feel about the result. Commissioner Klaus.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I guess I'll say a couple of things, but the first thing I want to say is that. The statement Commissioner Grant had today does have a lot in it. So. There's a lot we could go back and forth that we probably feel differently about as a board. And I don't want to focus necessarily on those details, but what I do want to kind of call out is that what I heard in that request, or in that. Statement was a request to pause where we're at right now and. Hold a series of work sessions dedicated to the budget. And I don't disagree with that request. Um. I know we've delayed a bit, you know, depending on whether staff are ready or commissioners are ready. And I appreciate the extra time we've been given, but. When we have agendas like we did last week and like we have tomorrow. Where we have the budget on there towards the end of the agenda with multiple items in front of it. I do feel like by the time we get to the budget conversation, everyone's in a rush to get the meeting over with, because we're already running close to the end of the time. So I would appreciate if we could do a couple of work sessions where we're just focused on the budget. I'm wondering if that can be done tomorrow, if we could potentially just have the morning session be dedicated to the budget and then put the afternoon. Uh, put the rest of the agenda items for tomorrow morning on the afternoon agenda. I don't know if that's an option or if we could hold any meetings on Thursdays or Fridays coming up like we did, um, recently. So that's something I'm wondering about. Um, I guess I'll leave it there for now.
I'm confused. I have a question for you. I, I, where, where have you been? Cause we've had those meetings. I've, that's, I've been doing nothing but those meetings, those meetings that you're asking for, that's what we've been doing.
Can you tell me when we had a boardwork session dedicated just to the budget?
September seventeenth, we had a massive.
Okay, so.
You know, I, I know I was, I was at that one. I think, uh, I think Commissioner Grant was at some other organization's planning session. But we had a full, almost a full day. I think it was a full day budget work session. We've had multiple of those.
Right. I'm glad you actually named that one because that was gonna be my next point that I held off on. Um. During that work, that planning session on the seventeenth, which wasn't recorded, so we can't go back to watch it. But luckily I did take pretty detailed notes and so did my executive aide. But you mentioned the scalpel versus chainsaw metaphor that you've been using. And I do recall that day. That the sheriff's team came in and, um. Told us that they didn't spend too much time on their proposal for that day, because. The cuts seemed completely unfeasible for them. And that's where we hear other elected offices coming forward now and saying. This is unfeasible. That's why we can't present to you what, what the cuts that we could make because we're so lean, we're operating. With so few people and we're so under-resourced that we can't possibly present to you a level of cut that would match what you're asking us to provide. Um, and at the end of that planning session, what I said was. Because the sheriff's team has such a large portion of our general fund compared to other offices, I was disappointed to hear that they hadn't spent that much time on it. But what I gathered from that meeting was that elected offices weren't given the same instructions that our departments were given. So our departments came in with each assistant county manager presenting a portfolio that was absolutely excellent, covered all the bases that we needed. And offices didn't come in with that same information. Um, and. In my conversations with those elected offices, I asked if they were prepared to come in with the same information that the departments came in with. And nobody was told to provide that same level of detail. And if they were, then I think we would have, we would be in a different place today. Because we would have had that information over a month ago. But we don't have that information and it's been on us, the burden's been on us as commissioners and on our elected counterparts. To get together and talk about all those details that were presented to us as a full group on the planning session on the seventeen. And that's taken a lot of time and a lot of energy, but we've done it. I think all of us have probably been having those meetings. Actually, I know we have. So. It's just been like scrap information over here and over here and try to pull information from wherever we can. So it's just been like scrap information over here and over here and try to pull information from wherever we can. When I believe the best use of time would have been to come in during that planning session on the seventeenth and have all of that information. But our offices weren't prepared to do that. Um, so.
There, there was a call to budget that went out, that everybody got. The difference is, this, the, the staff are, are essentially required to follow the, the guidance. And the offices, am I saying it right? Arms are offices, and the elected officials, they're independent. They don't, they don't take direction from anybody other than the electorate. But the, I mean, the, the results are completely, you know, you know, flip-flop from what you're suggesting. The, 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 what is it, offices or departments? Which ones are electeds?
Offices.
Offices. The departments that came in and followed the instructions, they're, they still are sitting at CPED's a nineteen point five percent budget reduction. You know, like that is, that is insane. So, you know, like to say that they had it taken easy on them because they got, you know, a different level of instruction, I think is false. And, you know, like the, we've had the work sessions, we've had the meetings. You know, we're gonna continue to have discussions and, and work sessions, but to, I, I don't, yeah.
Sure, yeah, I just would say that the same information was provided to the offices and departments. We sent out an email. We had a session where we went over a PowerPoint. We outlined what to, what we wanted them to prepare for the meeting with the board in September. Come before and talk about how they were gonna meet their targets. To Commissioner Fournier's point, um, assistant county managers, of course, worked with their departments on what, what that looked like. But they basically take this, took the same um request for that, for departments to show how they were gonna get to their cut. There were three items that we asked for them to prepare for information. And um, most of the offices did not um, prepared to have that conversation. So I disagree with the notion that there was different information given. I disagree with the notion that we have not been available and spent countless hours with offices who have reached out. Some are in the budget team and made themselves available. I made myself available. We have been on phone calls and meetings um, with commissioners, uh, elected officials in this county and department heads. We started this conversation in October two thousand twenty-four. We told the board that based on the outlook of the budget, things were grim, that there was a structural deficit. That the magnitude of that, of that structural deficit was going to be huge. Started January, we used at least one meet a month, sometimes two meetings a month, having budget conversations. And between those meetings, we've been requested, there's been requests for endless information. We've answered almost every request that we've been given. The budget team has worked tirelessly to put information in ways individual commissioners could better understand. And, and the office that reached out for requests for information, we met with them, we sat with them. We did that sometimes with commissioners. Like when we met with the auditor and the treasurer. And there was some great information provided about, could you look at this? Could you look at that? We took that information back. We did the research. We came to the commissioners immediately and presented that information, which helped to reduce uh some of the budget deficit. So this has been a year-long process. I understand what District Court's perspective is about transparency, communication, because this is the most communication that the county manager and the budget office has offered this organization. Hands down, from folks that have been here in this organization. And we're proud of the work, very proud of the communication that has taken place. And any office that wanted to say, hey, how are you going to present to the board? We would have made ourselves available. I would have had an assistant county manager meet with them to go over. But there's this push and pull. If we send out a template to offices and departments, the offices immediately respond, not all of them, but some of them, you don't have control over us. We were, we don't report to the county manager. So there's oftentimes a, we are walking a tightrope in being helpful and informative, but making sure we're respecting their uh elected autonomy. And sometimes um, in steps we've taken, we've received very, very quick and concerning emails uh and messages back about why are we doing this or why are we doing that? So we've been trying to be responsive throughout this time, and I think we've done a outstanding job speaking for the staff in an environment where there are challenges like TC Connect, but we move forward, just like we did last budget year, moving forward. And we've sat with folks who've said, your numbers are wrong. We meet with them, we clarify the numbers, they agree. We come out of that meeting only for them to go back to a narrative after we've proven that the numbers are not wrong. So I just offer that as a perspective, Chair, and.
Commissioner Klaus?
Thank you. Um, I, the county manager, you men, you mentioned um, if you were to send out a template and um, if you were to send out a template to offices, sometimes you get responses back saying basically that they don't have to take orders from our office or, you know, they have autonomy as elected offices. Was a template sent out for the primary planning session on the seventeenth?
In the presentation, maybe somebody can join us. In the presentation we provided, we outlined the three items that we would want all offices and departments to address with the board. Which included how they were gonna get to the cuts, the impacts of those cuts in, in services and positions, and then the impact to service uh that it would have out in the community. Assistant county managers, you might wanna fill in some gaps if I'm missing any points.
Email I've sent.
The, yes, I'm, I'm trying to find the email that went out to all departments and offices, because we had a meeting where all departments and offices, and we went, there was a PowerPoint that would, um, we went through that said, here are the items to include. The purpose of the exercise was for all departments and offices to talk about their programs and services. And in that budget reduction exercise to say, if I have to make this cut, here are the impacts to programs and services. And we specifically had our departments and offices taking the lead on that, because they are their subject matter experts. They would provide that information to the board, for the board then to look at, not positions, but impacts to programs and services and where, what you wanted to prioritize, that would help inform. With respect to a, respect to a specific template, there was a PowerPoint that was put together by one of the departments, and there was specific information in there. So that PowerPoint was sent out as here is an example of what one of the other departments sent out. That was sent out just to departments.
Okay.
The, the template that you could fill in was sent to all offices.
In the, that is correct.
Yeah.
An example, yeah.
Can you clarify? I was with you until the very last thing you said. What was the difference between the, what was the part that the, only the departments got that the offices didn't get?
One specific example from one department. So a template was provided to everybody. And then one department said, here's how I'm gonna do it with my specific numbers.
What I'll say as an example is emergency services is a great example. Their cuts were, would be detriment, but they still showed the board, here's what's gonna happen if we have these cuts. The dollar amount that we had to cut and the decisions that the board has made through the resolution to have a balanced budget is non-negotiable unless this board undoes that resolution. That's the direction that staff are taking to work through how do we balance the budget. We knew that it's the board's discretion on how to make final determinations on those dollar amounts. But when offices came and said, we cannot cut at all, emergency management could have said that, we can't cut. But they didn't. They said, here's our cut. It's in two phases. This is a, a certain level of cut we think we can manage operationally, and then here's the cut that we're requested to make, which is gonna be detrimental, and here's why. That gave you as a board, understanding and information to say, now I understand how those cuts are gonna be applied. When an office came and said, no, we can't make cuts, we understand what they're saying, we respect that notion. But the reality is, there's a deficit that has to be balanced. And their part to play was to come to show, here's how that's gonna play out. I've received conversations and emails from other elected officials that say, we should have never been forced to have to do that. We didn't force anybody. We put out the direction that we shared with the board in our approach to how we're gonna balance the budget, and it was up to folks to come to the board and have that engagement. We created that whole day-long um, uh, series after we've had a number of work sessions and conversations to get us to this point.
And in the sheriff's example, he did say what Commissioner, I think Klaus said, and.
But he came back with a proposal.
Let me finish. We pushed back and I had, when we, we got two subsequent memos with more detailed information, just that was part of, yeah. But Commissioner Fournier?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, he came back with a proposal. That, that was, that was the thing. And I, I think he realized that he, he was like, oops, you know what, maybe I should participate in this a little better. But what's, this, this conversation is frustrating to me, because I, I feel like if you are here to govern and help craft a, a product, then you participate in the meetings throughout the year. You seek to understand what's going on around you by holding meetings with the people that are at the table and get the, like the answers that you're, that you're seeking, that have been evident throughout the year, if you've been here participating. You don't wait until the end of a meeting and play I gotcha with uh staff at the table and interrogate them on, for, looking for answers for things that you've been witness to already throughout the year. That, like, that, to me, just, it's, 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 it's politicizing a process instead of participating in a process. And the, the, the I gotcha game, I, I, I don't, I don't appreciate it.
Commissioner Klaus?
The template that was sent out, actually, the whole presentation that was sent out to both offices and departments, can that be forwarded to the board?
For right now.
Okay, yeah, no, it doesn't need to be right this second, but I'm interested.
Is it, it does spell out all the things that, that we provided to all the offices and departments.
Okay. I would also be interested in knowing which department was able to provide an example and seeing that example.
CPED.
It was CPED, okay. And then I wanted to ask Commissioner Fournier.
Emergency Services. Yeah, we should do, we should do some research on this, but.
Public Works, and you saw it, because she present, Karen presented it to the board. That's exactly what she, what she presented.
Yeah.
That was the example.
Who'd form Public Works was leaving the pack.
Thanks.
Yeah, well, because I now know that, I really wish that would have been sent to the offices, because Public Works always does a really, really good job with their presentations. And I think if that was sent out, that could have been the example, offices could have used to say, okay, well, this is what departments are doing, and then they have the decision whether or not.
I stand by my decision not to send it out, yeah.
Okay, well, I wasn't done talking. Um, I think that the offices would have had the opportunity to then make the decision on whether or not they wanted to match that example, or pick and choose which pieces of that example to um, move forward. You can stand by your decision, county manager, to not send information out, but you continue to stand by your decision to not send information out to multiple different offices and to staff and to the board. So we don't have to get into that now. We can have a one-on-one meeting where I can go over that with you. Um, we've talked about that before, but I have a, a lot of issues with the way that you choose what to send to who. And I think that's a big reason why we're here today.
Just for clarification, Commissioner Klaus, the specific information that was asked regarding the budget reduction, those instructions and that guidance was provided to every office and department that showed up to the September second meeting that we had. I mean, it was a virtual meeting, and there was a PowerPoint presentation, and we talked about, here's what, here's the information that we are trying to get to the board, in terms of what are the impacts for this budget reduction. You've been given a target. What are those impacts to programs and services, so that the board could make an informed decision? And it was specifically identified what, how to, what, what to consider to provide the board information. Just for clarification.
On the bigger point, as the guy who's been here seven years, there's more information coming out from this county manager and assistant county manager team through email and different processes than ever before. I mean, I mean, I'm gonna.
It's fact.
Taking the Josh's reaction as a support. I mean, if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong.
And your directors and everyone is like, they're pulling for all information. So for folks that have gone through multiple budget seasons, the work that's gone into this one, the length of time, amount of information that's been shared, the difference here is the outcome. This is a hard year, and pulling together is a hard thing to do. But recognizing that your team has provided as much information as possible, that we had the meeting on September second, that we provided the PowerPoint with the template. Offices and departments provided the information that they saw fit. The goal is to pull together in these hard times, and as was demonstrated by the list of other counties that are going through the same thing, we are not alone. And to have a presumption that we are does not take into account the reality of the entire state and country. From my perspective.
Speaking of that, I have been looking into what other counties have been doing. And I've been struggling to find another county that has made such large cuts from their courts. So that's one area where uh I continue to be concerned. And like I mentioned last week, I'm working on bringing forward a proposal um, to the board. But I do have concerns that tomorrow we have a motion on our agenda to approve the preliminary budget so that it can be prepared for final approval on the sixteenth of December. And I have concerns that remain due to the fact that we haven't addressed that disproportionate cut to the courts. And I'm not saying that because I'm trying to speak negatively of the process by which we got where we are today. I think that we all have concerns about different parts of the process, and we've all made compromises to find agreement where we can. But none of that negates the fact that, like I said last week, these cuts, where they stand today, will break the system. And I am really concerned about that. And because of that, I do think that we should pump the brakes and talk as a board about the whole public safety system, because all of those different components of the system work together and impact one another. And I, it will be extremely, I mean, there's not really, it would be an understatement. Whatever I could come up with in terms of how to articulate it, I don't think I could state it correctly, like the impact it would have on our community to do this, where if the courts are not funded, if they're cut at such a high rate, and we see law enforcement being cut just enough to where they will have maybe a couple minor operational impacts, but for the most part, fortunately for them, they have a lot of vacancies in that options program that they can use to manage this cut. But that doesn't bring down their operational capacity in a way that will allow the courts to have any sort of lighter workload. So by doing that, we're gonna maintain the same operational capacity in law enforcement, which I'm not saying is a bad thing. I just wish that that could come along with maintaining operational capacity in the courts, so that the system doesn't completely break on us. And we don't have people sitting in jail waiting, not having speedy trials or having cases dropped because they can't get before a judge, or sitting in jail when they shouldn't be, because if they would see a judge, then they could maybe be diverted or something else could be ordered. So, and we already have a full jail. So by taking so much out of the Superior Court where our felony cases are processed, when the jail issue is primarily made up of folks with the more serious offenses, that's where the problem is. The space issue is primarily in the max unit, and that's gonna be people who are seen through Superior Court. So we have to talk as a board to coordinate these components a bit more. And that's where I take issue with the current budget and the fact that we are being asked to approve the preliminary budget tomorrow. I don't think that where it's at right now is gonna be a successful outcome for the community next year. And it's going to degrade public safety as a whole if the system's not working correctly.
So on the discussion on outcomes for the board to have a conversation, the question on process, on September second at four thirty PM, we met with all offices and departments to share our presentation. The offices asked that that be sent out. It was sent out at five fourteen PM on September second, right after the meeting. In the presentation on slides thirteen and fourteen, strategic approach to reducing expenditures, it provides a template on how to do that, which was used by the departments. The suggested how-to is number one, identify the services for reduction, demonstrate reduction in expenditure by service, and then number three, communicate the impact to the public and broader community. So everybody saw that, and only some chose to do that. And it was provided, like I said, after a meeting that was held with all offices and departments that decided to attend. So to answer the question, when was the sand and what was sent, I can resend this to the board.
That would be great. Thank you. That would be great, thank you. Um, one request that I have for the county manager moving forward is to include the board on correspondence that's going out to all offices and departments moving forward. Um, that way we have a better understanding of what information is being sent out so that we don't get here to the boardroom and talk about discrepancies in communications.
Can't give direction, you as an individual commissioner can act give direction to the county manager.
Okay, and we are here as a board of five, so we can talk about.
Requires a vote. If you want direction given, ha- direction has to be given as a body to the county manager, not as an individual.
Thank you, Wayne. So then let's talk about it.
I'm not giving, I'm not making that.
Oh, well, you seem to have something to say, so.
Saying you can't do that, you can't, you can't say that.
Can't make, okay, Wayne, we're not gonna do this.
No, you can't do that. That's not how it works. You you as an individual commissioner can't sit here and give out directives.
So I had a request for the county manager. That's how I framed it.
It's not a directive, it's it's a request.
That's what I said. We're not to play this game.
That is a directive. You cannot direct staff, you know that. We've gone over this a million times.
I said a request.
And Chair, we're on um commissioner items. I'm not sure if there's anything else to be discussed on this.
We're still on an item right now. We're not done.
I I'm lost as to what where we're at with this discussion.
I think Wayne's comment kind of got us off track. I was talking to the county manager. If we would like to have a discussion as a board, my request for the county manager that I would like the board to consider is to include the full board on all correspondence that goes out to offices and departments.
There's.
So you have to make a motion.
So I was gonna say, let me, let me, so you threw that proposal out. I didn't hear anyone that wanted to comment on the substance of it. You can make a motion and if there's a second, we would discuss and vote on that motion. That's where how you wanna handle it. If you just wanna discuss it as is the merits of it to see whether we'd wanna make a motion. I didn't hear anyone that really had any opinion about that. Is there anyone who will comment on this? There was no motion on the table, so.
I'm not opposed to it. I I would vote in favor of it, so. Um, I think it's a good idea just to, just so that we're not getting information from um offices and departments that we didn't know. You know, where what's happening. There was an instance where we uh where I was informed that uh you know, from I was informed from the office, one of the offices discussion that that um they were to be presenting. I'm uh we just, there was information that I didn't know was happening. Um, and and so I think that it's a good idea.
The end of that item.
I guess I'll make a motion since no one wants to say anything until a motion's made, except Rachel. Thank you, Rachel.
I don't have an opinion.
Okay, well, then let's take a vote. I make a motion to request, I make a motion to direct the county manager to include the full board on correspondence that goes out to all offices or all depart- uh departments or both. Regarding the budget moving forward.
Clarification, is it? Does the distribution list include all or is it if one email goes to an office or or a department?
Well, my request is that if an email goes to all departments that were included. If it goes to all offices, the board's included. And if it goes to both, then we're included. So if it's general correspondence that goes to all departments, I would like the board to be included on that.
But not individual departments, right?
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second to direct that the board be included on all email correspondence that goes to either all offices, all departments, or both of those groups. Discussion on that motion.
Well, I don't mind the motion. I've heard complaints several times that, you know, email is not the best way and that they, you know, they get lost. So like, balance there too, right?
I I'm pretty confident that anytime a a relevant email goes out to all departments and offices, the commissioners are included. And we're in the loop on any of those discussions. Um, I I don't like playing he said, she said, I, you know. I I can't imagine, well, I'm I'm confident that the county manager keeps us in the loop on those discussions. And I think the, you know, the motion. I I don't, I really don't care one way or the other because I'm not worried about it. Um, I can't imagine even if the motion fails, that the county manager would probably still just be including us in all correspondence when it goes out to the whole county because we are part of the county. Um, we are elected officials, so when an email goes out to all the elected officials, we're included in those. Um, the, yeah, uh, he said, she said is is kind of annoying, but I, it doesn't matter me one way or the other.
As the county managers, are any operational wrinkles to the proposal that we wouldn't, that I wouldn't see? Cause anywhere I'm sitting right now.
Yeah, when we include the commissioners because of the board dynamic. Um, uh, there is potential for serial meeting if there's a reply all. Um, and I think in in the context, the information that went out was the information we reviewed in detail that week. So we reviewed the information about the targets, discussed that, got your input. We informed you that this was information was going out. And then we took the initiative to pull everyone together. After sending out the targets, pull them together to have a meeting. That's an operational conversation. So then pulling everyone together to have that operational conversation. And it, you know, it, I think at any time, there is an open flow of communication that says, hey, can I get that? Or what, can I get a status on that? We do that all day long.
I I think, you know, we we heard today uh an an example that was given based on a false narrative that information wasn't given to offices that was given to departments. We've heard the counter to that from Assistant County Manager Cummings where he read off what exactly was given to absolutely everyone. So that that narrative that was that that's being run with is untrue. And that's been proven. And I don't know if we have to continue repeating that to to make that clear, but I I'm comfortable with what I've been told. Um, I said earlier that I I don't care if this motion passes one way or the other, but but I do. I I'm not gonna micromanage. I'm not in favor of micromanaging the county manager or the or the staff. Uh, so it's a no for me, but I'm confident that uh we're given the information and if there's something relevant that's going out to all staff and electeds, we're gonna be included. Um, so yeah, it's a no for me.
Commissioner Klaus.
Um, well, I'm not sure what Wayne's going on about because. Thanks, Wayne. Um, I don't know what you're talking about because you're saying there's a false narrative that specific information was not shared, but that's actually not true. Because the county manager doubled down that there was an example shared to departments and not offices. So I'm not quite sure what you missed there. Um, similarly, as far as feeling confident that we're already included on these um communications, we've talked about a couple of different emails that we weren't included on. So I don't feel confident that we're included on everything that would be of interest to us. So that's, I guess, what I have.
Okay, any other discussions?
I got just a point of clarification that September second email wasn't sent out by the county manager. It was sent out by Summer. As a follow-up to the thirty-minute virtual meeting that we had, giving instructions that the board had given for the budget reduction exercise.
And the board asked us to have that meeting with offices and departments.
That was direction, that was a board motion that was, yes.
Was that motion reflected in the meeting minutes?
Motion would be reflected in meeting minutes.
Okay, and that motion you said was taken on the second?
I did it.
It was not taken on the second. It was taken weeks before and it was at my request.
Okay. Um, the one more, the one last thing I have for uh was in response to the county manager's concern related to serial meetings, we see do not reply all on every single email, so we're used to that. So that's not a concern to me.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. I'll let you hear if you say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all opposed, nay, nay. Two, two to one, two to two.
So I just wanna then acknowledge that the board is voting to continue a lack of transparency.
Board is voting to not mic, I I see this as basically an unproductive power struggle. And I'm not interested in in micromanaging at that level, the communications of how the county manager operates. Um, it's unnecessary and I agree with most of the comments Commissioner Fornier said. And we do have a, I will point out, we do have a code of conduct, I believe, that's been enacted where we are required by that code, correct me if I'm wrong, to use our respectful titles of the various elected officials. We do sometimes deviate from that, but when an elected official asks you to refer to his title, I think you're obligated to do that under our code of conduct. I just wanna remind you of that.
I apologize, Commissioner Fornier, for that. I don't know if it's in the code of conduct, but whether it is or not, doesn't matter. I apologize for calling you by your first name after you requested that. Um, there are a lot of violations of the code of conduct very often, especially when commissioners interrupt each other and it's primarily Commissioner Fornier that does that. Um, so if we're gonna make comments on the code of conduct, I'll do that every single time there's a violation. I can do that. That's okay. Um, I have another motion to hold a work session dedicated to the public safety budget. Prior to voting to approve the preliminary budget, which is the motion on the agenda tomorrow.
Second. Motion and a second to hold a work session on the public safety budget. Which is all all seven pieces of the public safety, that's seventy-five percent of the general, and so it's basically on the budget. Just to make sure I understand the scope.
Yes, that would include.
Coroner. Prosecutor court, district court, sheriff, clerk.
All but the coroner.
Okay.
The coroner's part of her.
Pre-trial services.
Pre-trial services. I would like the pre-trial services. The coroner, I mean, the coroner is not included in my motion. My motion includes district court, superior court, juvenile court, prosecutor, sheriff, and pre-trial and public defense. If other commissioners want the coroner, that's okay with me, but that's just not in my intended motion.
Discussion on the motion.
I think it's it's pretty late in the game. I think we've already had all these work sessions. Uh, I'm I'm doing the main decision-making. Uh, what is on the dock tomorrow is a preliminary budget, not a final budget. We, of course, will continue having budget discussions and work sessions regardless of the motion.
Yeah, I guess, cause you've connected kind of concerns to tomorrow's piece. And I just, I think I'm confused now. I just wanna make sure I understand because tomorrow are about the 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 requests that came in for addi- uh additions. It sounds, but it sounds like what you wanna talk about is the cuts that were, you know, the target. So I mean, it's, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page about what, the timing of what's happening tomorrow versus. My understanding from your comments is that you wanna kind of revisit the decisions that were made about how to allocate, how to balance the budget essentially. Tomorrow's decision-making is about making preliminary decisions on new requests for offices and departments, which are not necessarily connected. Is, so is that, is that your understanding?
Well, the first thing I'll say is tomorrow's motion, honestly, it's unclear to me what it's for because it's preliminary approval of the preliminary twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. That sounds like a lot more to me than just the spreadsheets about recommending funds. So perhaps staff can clarify what the motion actually entails tomorrow so I can be better prepared. But to answer your question, um, my intention is to, for the board to really discuss the public safety system as a whole and how taking disproportionate cuts from one branch of the public safety system could potentially cause issues down the road. And I'm working really hard, spending every single second of my time outside of this building on trying to do this analysis on my own. Fortunately, I have quite a bit of educational background in public safety, but that's not enough to really fully, I'm not the subject matter expert on county operations here in Thurston County with the deep intricacies of how these different systems work together. So I could bring forward a proposal like I'm planning on doing um this week. But I would really appreciate a full board discussion where we can talk about and analyze how these different systems are gonna interact with one another so that my proposal can have the context and substance it needs behind it to really, I wanna come to the board with all my Ts crossed and all my Is dotted. Um, so that we can make a decision that's based in fact and analysis on all sides. Um, and so, yeah, I would like for the board to have the opportunity to sit down and look at just those specific pieces um, in its own conversation. And as Commissioner Fornier pointed out, we are having continued conversations. We are having ongoing conversations all the way up until December sixteenth, and I would like this to be one of the conversations.
Uh, Summer had something and then I'll go to Commissioner Minter.
Sure, so I just wanna remind the board that um on Wednesday, we had the preliminary review of the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. Tomorrow, it is the final preliminary review. Um, I do need the board to make those final preliminary decisions because I have got to publish a budget book by November twelfth. And currently, that book is about five hundred and fifty pages. So it's a great deal of work that I need to pull together. This has been an ongoing conversation for the last twelve months. We have given a lot of updates. We've taken a lot of direction. I feel like we've done a really good job in maintaining that direction in every action um by myself and by my team. It's been a lot, a lot of work. Um, if you deviate from the schedule at this point, then you are at risk of violating your statutory requirements to publish the notice of a preliminary budget decision, to publish the actual preliminary budget book and to publish the the public notices of the hearing on December first. Not to mention, you're really compressing the timeframe in which I have to do the work.
Commissioner Klaus.
Thank you. Um, given that information, I think that it's critical then to have this conversation as soon as possible so that it doesn't get in the way of publishing the budget book by November twelfth. That way, we have all of this information. We've discussed it and we've made decisions on how to move forward with the public safety budget. Um, prior to the approve or fa- the finalization of the budget book. Um, I also kinda just wanna comment on what I've heard a few times being raised as as far as the uh discussion being something that's been ongoing for twelve months. Yes, we have had budget conversations for twelve months and even, we're always talking about the budget. Um, so I don't, yeah, it it is our primary job. Um, so yes, we've been having conversations for a very long time. However, I'm talking specifically about this piece of the conversation. That is the eleven point four million dollar cut that we're currently looking at.
Ten point eight now, after we.
Okay. Okay, uh, then I guess I don't have the most recent copy in front of me. Um, but ten point eight um million, that's what I want to discuss is what the impacts of those cuts would be on the county. And that's not a conversation we've had twelve months to talk about. It's just been over the last couple of weeks that we've gotten down to that point, um, to that dollar amount. And Commissioner Minter, I know, I see you smiling. I wanna say I.
Nothing.
I know.
About this.
I know. I know.
Nothing.
I know. We talked about this a few days ago and I'm.
Talked about this, but we haven't talked about this. That's, you keep contradicting yourself.
And I have, if if I had heard.
Can I finish, please? Thank you. Um, Mr. Minter, we talked the other day about this. And I understand how incredibly frustrating parts of this can be. And I'm not saying we haven't talked about this. And I'm not saying we didn't do incredibly difficult and good work getting down to this ten point eight million dollar amount. That is absolutely amazing that we were able to do that in a couple of months' time. Get from a thirty-six million dollar cut down to a ten point eight dollar, million dollar cut. However, this ten point eight million dollar number is what we are looking at moving forward with. That's the final amount of the cut that we are looking at moving forward with. And I would like to have one specific conversation about that cut, the ten point eight where we're landing now and the impact it will have on our public safety system. That's the conversation I would like to have.
And what would the impact be if we didn't spend five million dollars? And what would the impact be if we didn't spend five million dollars of reversion in violation of our budget policy? Or if we didn't pass a sales tax that's gonna generate seven point five million dollars, which is arguably not a particularly responsible thing to do. There's twelve and a half million, or divert a million dollars of opioid settlement money toward, away from an opioid response plan. That I spent four years in stakeholder groups helping draft toward a eligible need that helps the general fund relief and helps all the offices and departments. There's a, right, there's a thirteen and a half million dollar, so now we're up to twenty-three or twenty-four million. What would that cut look like?
Those are great questions, and that's not what I'm asking. The question I'm asking is about the ten point eight million dollars. And I know that you are passionate about these issues, all of us are, and I'm not saying, I'm not trying to disregard everything you just asked and everything you just mentioned. It's been hard work, but I'm talking about the ten point eight million. And this happened when we talked a couple of days ago. I said. I'm trying to focus this conversation on one piece. It's an emotional conversation with a lot involved, and I know that. And I thank you for your work as the chair, coming up with a proposal that got us to this number. That's incredible work, and I'm not being facetious. I'm not being sarcastic. Thank you for that. But I want to talk about the ten point eight million before we rub, not rubber stamp, but before we put the final stamp on it. I want to talk about the ten point eight million and the impacts that that is going to have.
Thank you for correcting yourself on the rubber stamp statement, because we have all put a lot of work into getting here. This is the exact opposite of a, of a rubber stamp, as has been pointed out by commissioners and staff. There's a motion on the table. I don't, you know, I don't think the motion's necessary, so it's a no for me. Because we are going to continue having budgets discussions and budget work sessions and talking about this topic. And at any point in any of our upcoming budget discussions, we can specifically highlight this as a topic. We can, we can do that at any point. So doing a, a knee jerk motion to cram in. A budget work session between now and tomorrow, I don't think is timely or appropriate. Tomorrow is the preliminary budget, as I stated like five times already. We will keep moving forward until we grab the final budget. And in between now and then, there's gonna be multiple subsequent opportunities to talk.
So I'll take a, a vote on the motion.
I have one question, because what Commissioner Fornier just said leads me to believe that there might be some, like, more clarity that's needed around this motion. I'm not asking that we put a work session on the agenda for today or tomorrow. I'm asking that we put that work session on the agenda prior to approving the preliminary budget. So we could push the preliminary budget vote out in order to allow for time for this work session. My fear is that if we don't do this now, we will be having work session after work session after work session next year. An executive session after executive session to talk about all of the violations of people's rights. And how, and there will be many, many things coming our way that will be the consequences of our decision. Which could be alleviated in advance if the board would just move past the pieces that are being driven by passion and emotion. To really talk about the nuts and bolts of what a ten point eight million dollar cut will do to our public safety system.
Any additional, so the, the motion is, just to clarify, the motion, as I understand it, is to have a work session. On the public safety budget minus the coroner. Prior to a vote on the preliminary budget.
Yes.
And that's a sec, that's been seconded?
Yes, second.
Is there any other discussion before we take a vote? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
So next time, somebody says that every time there's a request, it's, it's granted. This is an example of that not happening. Well, there are frequently comments made, including one today by the county manager, that every request for information has been granted. And similar comments of that nature are made when we talk about when commissioners would like information, that information is provided. I'm asking for a simple work session and the board has voted not to do that.
That's not information from the county manager. That's what you wanted.
I'm saying similar in nature.
Completely different. You're not requesting information. You're giving direction to the county to completely derail. Its current budget process and, and, and further. Go down the road a, a direction you wish. That, that is not how the board operates. That's not how things work. That, that's, that's not requesting information. And there's been multiple, multiple, multiple opportunities for you. You know, that's the, that's what I was saying earlier. If you look to under, if you're trying to understand things. Then you would be holding meetings with, with staff and, and doing that and trying to understand things and then crafting a product. But this is trying to control things, which is okay too. That's part of what we do. But you were unsuccessful in your motion, and that's just, that's the way it works at the end of the day. Sometimes you get the votes, sometimes you don't get the votes. If you don't get the votes, you don't get to control that process.
Everything you're saying, I've done. I've had those meetings with staff. I have used those meetings to create proposals that I'm bringing forward. As soon as I can. My request to have a work session is a request for information, because that's where we would get the information. And that's where we would ask the questions that needed, that need to be asked in a group setting, not in a one-on-one or a two-on-one with staff.
You, you asked to delay, you're, within your motion, it delayed a series of events. So delaying the passing of the preliminary budget, that, that is, that is, if you would have simply said, I'd like to set up a budget. I'd like a budget briefing on this, then we do that all the time. And at some point in the future, when it doesn't derail a process that has already been eternally derailed. And is crunched down to a very short timeframe, because continued requests for information have kicked the can down the road. Now we're down to crunch time and the, the board has to be much more stringent on how it allows that, that process to be. Continually derailed. You understand?
Well, I understand what you're saying, but like, we act like there's just no flexibility. Like, we can't pu- push the preliminary budget vote to tomorrow afternoon instead of tomorrow morning, because it's on tomorrow morning's agenda.
I mean, I heard.
A Thursday or a Friday. And I just want to say to my seatmates, like, regardless of whether or not I feel like I'm respected at this table or not. Which fortunately, I do feel like generally I am, but regardless of whether or not I feel that way. I would always, always support a seatmate's request to do something that allows them to do their job to their full capacity. I want all of you to come here as your best self and your strongest self every single time we meet, because that's how we're gonna get good work done. We have to be able to support each other in feeling confident in our decisions. And I hope that the board will start to realize that it's possible to give that same respect to others. Because I give that respect to you all. If you had a request, I would support that request, because I want you to feel like you are coming. With all the information that you needed to feel confident in your decision. And I just don't see that that's mutual.
I, I, I just want to say that the budget, you know, I, I'd say nine times out of ten, what you say is right, and, and I always strive to do that. The budget has got really, like, it's a whole rigmarole of process and dates. And you know how many times we've changed that calendar? Like, I know we've gone over this in past meetings, but over and over and over to accommodate. You know, we've got five board members now and new processes and a really tough budget situation. And lots of information, 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 follow-up meetings, follow-up meetings. But there's a point at which decisions had to be made. And I just, you know, we're getting pushed back from really hard decisions. I expected that. I didn't land at anything that I landed on easily or feel good about it. And I understand what you're saying about the, about the impacts of the public safety system. They're true. But, you know, we, we have decisions that have to be made and deadlines that have to be met and a whole process that has to be gone through. And it's, it's different. I just, my point is just that budget's a little different. And the rigidity that you're feeling and seeing, I think, is warranted because of the, the nature of, of the budget process and, and how it works. And it's unfortunate that, you know, some of you guys are going through this for the first time in this really tough environment of, of, of budget cuts. But. I, yeah, I just don't, I don't think that we can. I don't know what I'm trying to say.
Maybe let me step back from kind of how convoluted this conversation is, has become and say. My request was intended to be an opportunity for me to feel. And hopefully for other commissioners to learn too, but for me to feel like I am confident in the cuts that are being made to the public safety system. Because that's where my main concern is right now. I've requ, I've offered suggestions, like, can we take everything else off the morning agenda? And just have it be dedicated to the budget. There didn't seem to be much interest in that. I ended up making a motion that didn't pass. Which we all know what that was, because we were here for it. But if the board, if anyone has suggestions on how this can be accomplished, if it means a work session. Prior to the end of November or whatever, it doesn't have to be before the preliminary budget decision that's on the agenda for tomorrow. But I would like to have that conversation and I'm open to hearing what my seatmates think about when the most appropriate time is for that conversation.
So now you said something differently than what your motion stated. Your motion stated before, and that's why I couldn't support it, because I cannot. We have statutes as well that we operate under, that they're very stringent on us. And I want to give staff the time in order to publish, you know, and, and give the public notices out. If it's between now and December, I'm willing to have that conversation. But I'm not willing to delay the preliminary budget even more than it's already been delayed at this point. And, you know, that was the reason why we started so early. And I think I made this comment to Commissioner Minzer, right? I was like, well, thankfully, we did start so early, because if we were doing this in our regular timeline. And as many delays as we faced, it would be, this would be even more crammed and more just. So thank you, County Manager and Summer, for, you know, having that foresight and starting us earlier than, than what we've usually done in the past. So if that is something that you are proposing, that between now and before the final budget hearing. That you would like to have that conversation, I am, I'm open to that.
I see people packing up. This meeting was scheduled to, till eleven. We're already five minutes over. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I would object to that motion.
I'm not sure, I was getting ready to close this meeting. I mean, where are we at with this? I thought we covered.
Yeah.
What, what's left on the i, table? We've covered your items, Commissioner Klaus?
All right, I mean, so.
We had two motions and they were both, well, two to two to, to want to, to.
So what is the best, I just asked some questions and Commissioner Mejia seems open to that. I know we're five minutes past time, but the budget is our job, so I'm okay with staying a couple of minutes past time. I stated my intention behind the motion that just failed. The motion was imperfect, okay? I'm asking us to take a step back and think about when is the most appropriate time to have a conversation about the public safety budget. And if, and I don't know, this is my first time doing a biennial budget. If that means before November twelfth, when the budget book is posted, if it means before the last public hearing. I'm asking my board member, my seatmates who have been here who know, and staff who might know, when is the most appropriate time for that conversation?
Like, three weeks ago?
Then maybe we should have it tomorrow.
There's a motion on the table. I didn't get a second on the motion to adjourn. That's your timeline motion.
So no one's gonna answer that question. We're not gonna have a work session, because no one's interested in figuring out when it's the most appropriate time to do that.
I, I've said it many times, we're gonna continue to have work sessions. We're gonna continue to meet. We can have that at any time. But I'm not okay with delaying the, the budget calendar further. So next time we meet, next time, you know, we, this wasn't, this wasn't on the agenda and we're talking about this right now. So there, there are multiple points in future, in future meetings, at, at future junctures. Where you can, where you can lay that out and have that discussion, where you can set the table for the discussion to happen properly. And, and we can do that. Or you can also meet with, with, with Summer on the side and talk about those things. So there's multiple opportunities.
You had concerns that were past time and you keep saying the same thing over and over, so.
You keep saying the same thing over and over too.
Okay, guys, we're gonna stop there. I, I need to say that. Because I want you to understand, I, I'm sort of torn, because like, this conversation that you're, it's like you're putting this importance on this conversation. That you're proposing, but like, my life has been that thing. I've, I've met with you, I've met with each one of you individually. I've met with Judge Skinner, I've met with Judge Thomas, I've met with Commissioner Rue, I've met with Sheriff Sanders, I've met, I mean, that, that's all I'm doing is going. Is discussing and weighing the public safety budget. Now you want to have it in this public forum. You know, I haven't heard a proposal of how, you know, who, there's gonna be winners and losers at this point. I haven't seen a proposal. You know, that, that's something new to discuss at board level. It's just talking about the public safety budget, that's been my life for the last couple of months. So I'm not sure, for me, the value of what you're describing, what, what it means, what, you know, I'm not opposed to having it. Whether it has to be tomorrow, I don't, I think it's disconnected in some regard from the, the decisions that are on the table for tomorrow. On the new, the new requests from the different offices and departments. So I just don't know quite where we're. Where we're at with what you're describing. Commissioner Mejia, you said you're open to a discussion like the one described by Commissioner Klaus. But in terms of timing.
For me, it would have, you know. I'm not going to. Delay our preliminary budget is basically, you know, we have decisions and we have mandates as well, just like every other office. Just, we have mandates and I will keep with those mandates. And so I'm not willing to delay, again, like I said, like I mentioned, I'm willing to have this conversation between now. You know, and I, again, I would ask also for clarification on like, what would be the, the intent, right? Is it just to bring all the justice stakeholders here and, and just hear from them? Like, what, what would be the, the intent? Because, you know, I've, I've also been having these conversations. And I know everyone has, so what would be the intent of, of that work session?
Thank you for asking, for letting me answer that. The intent would be for us to look specifically at the cuts to those parties mentioned. To understand what a disproportionate cut to the Superior Court, the, the couple that are getting the bigger cut. What would the impacts of those cuts be on the public safety system as a whole? That's not a conversation we've been able to have here as a board yet, because we've had so many other pieces we've had to discuss. And so I want to pull out this specific dynamic that I think is very, very flawed in our current budget number. And our cut number, the ten point eight, I think that it's very disproportionate. And I would like to have a conversation as a board. Since we are all having these conversations with elected officials, to come together and say, here's what I've learned. Here's what I think would happen. Here are some potential pros and cons of moving forward in this way. I mean, I want to have a full conversation specifically about the public safety piece.
But that's not going to change the targets that we set.
It might change the targets. It might have, it might make, result in us deciding as a board, we have to change the targets in order to avoid. Bigger consequences down the road. I'm not asking to delay the preliminary decision. That was part of the motion that failed, so that's, I want to make that clear. I agree with you, Commissioner Mejia, and everyone. We shouldn't delay the, the vote tomorrow. That makes sense to me after having this conversation. But before its final approval, I do think we should have this conversation. I think the earlier the better. So that staff has time to put that in their final numbers in December.
Could I have a suggestion? So I think that we all feel the impact to all of our different partners that are taking cuts. Perhaps the work that was requested on September seventeenth, a proposal on what those cuts might look like with the justice partners. Maybe that would be a productive conversation.
Can you restate what you said?
The justice partners.
Yes.
Uh, like the, some offices and departments did on September seventeenth, was to provide their recommendation for how the cuts would be impacted their organizations. Perhaps the justice partners could get together and provide a shared recommendation on how they would share those cuts. That they can agree on. Instead of just continuing to discuss what the impacts are, there was three things. There was, what are the impacts? How are you going to achieve those cuts? And what are the numbers? Perhaps seeing that, which is what was provided on September seventeenth, perhaps if we could see that from our justice partners. The board would have something to consider instead of just con- continuing to have a conversation.
So adding up the, adding up the numbers, let me see if I understand what you're saying. Adding up the numbers that were applied to those partners. Whatever that is, let's say it's eight million dollars out of the ten point eight, or I don't know, six or whatever it is. Let's say it's six million dollars and then asking them to discuss the best way to allocate that across the system. That's been tried. I'm looking at Jennifer, you guys have been, that, that was, that kind of approach was tried, I think, right. I think, right before I got on the board. Um, it it wasn't very successful at that time, but it was a different, but this is a different world we're in and different. There's been new, some new people and we're in a much more difficult situation.
Yeah, and I I think to Josh's point, because we have not received from some of the offices their plans today. That continues to be a concern because Summer has to load information into the system and we don't have any information to load in besides the the number the board's approved. So we need them to do that work regardless.
I like that that approach. I think that would be like a a valuable piece of conversation with all the criminal justice partners sometime. I know we also have comprehensive plan that's going to be, uh, taking over our life in November. Um, but if there is time, I I would make, if it's okay with you, I would make a motion, uh, to have a work session with our criminal justice partners, and I would like to include the coroner on that.
Um. To receive their proposal?
To receive their proposals. But also have a conversation.
Well, so we've got the template. Perhaps we could share the template again with those justice partners and they could provide the board their shared proposal for how the reductions. So I'm not sure how that motion will work, but.
But the key, uh, what I don't want to do is just basically redo what they should have done on the seventeenth and basically give them a second shot at what they failed to do. So there has to be an element of this that's new, which is what I, when you said the word should, what I thought is you were gonna, we were gonna ask them to collaborate with each other.
That's what, that that's what my.
Which would be something new that we didn't ask on the seventeenth, but it could be very useful to the board.
That together they do the seventeenth project. So this is a do-over, but a do-over plus.
Yes, with a new wrinkle that helps us now that we've gotten some numbers dialed in. Uh, it might help them makes, because they know, Commissioner Klaus, what I'm worried about, and this kind of goes to like, what I'm worried about is when you're saying like, we need to have this discussed, like Commissioner Mejia and I, we worked inside the system, you know, so like hearing everybody's perspective about like what it's gonna mean to the courts, I don't know that that's all that valuable to me. But hearing tho- those people's perspective, those subject matter experts would be super valuable because they know a lot more than we, than any of us know, including Commissioner Mejia and I, about what those impacts are. And I've heard some of, I've heard about it, but in piecemeal fashion from individuals who are coming, you know, a hundred percent guns blazing, getting their their budget restored. But we've never had a collaborative decid- uh, uh, process where we work, um, as a justice system. And again, that was tried in like twenty seventeen, eighteen. Um, yeah.
I think you should just build in a, um, kind of a, a understanding that the only way that comes forward is if all of the offices actually do the cut exercise. Because if, what I understand would happen, um, before you took the board, because staff had shared that with me, is that some of the offices said, well, like like we have today, we can't make any cuts. So an office can't tell another office, you have to make these cuts. And I don't want to create a situation where the board's waiting for something and they, we don't get a product and we're in the same place we are. That's just, that'll be a waste of time.
So what would be an appropriate motion? Because I like that component that Josh said.
And put a time limit on it then, to honor that time limit.
If you want to take a five-minute recess, we can work with the assistant county managers and the clerk to come up with a proposed motion for the board.
Okay, let's do that, because I need to, I'm, I have a meeting offsite with another elected official about the budget and I'm gonna have to reschedule that. So I'll need about, we'll, we'll come back at eleven twenty-five. Okay, so seven thirty-four, took a few extra minutes to, uh, come back and we're, we're we're still, uh, at the pale end of our agenda setting work session for October twenty-first and where do we stand? There was a proposed motion. Commissioner Mejia, do you have it?
Yes. I would move to request the law and justice offices, Superior Court, District Court, Juvenile Court, Clerk of the Courts and Thurston County Sheriff's Office and the Coroner's Office work together to prepare a shared reduction plan which meets the targets set by the Board of County Commissioners on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. In order to meet with the board, a proposal must be submitted to the clerk of the board with itemized and specific reductions that meet the combined budget reductions targets for the specified offices.
Second, which I just informally added up is just over seven million dollars. Okay, um, a motion and a second, as a discussion on that motion. We have a date?
Does it have a, when does it say it received by in the motion?
Did I put it? I missed that.
Read the motion again.
I will read it again.
We, uh, waiting, are we pausing?
It's pausing.
Okay.
We're happy to have the clerk.
I removed my motion.
Happy to have the clerk share the motion or, um, uh, in an email, just okay, guys.
Thank you, County Manager, so that we all have it for reference.
Yes.
Make sure you send it to everyone.
Monday is the twenty-seventh, correct?
Yes.
Monday, okay.
Okay, could you restate the motion, Commissioner?
Yes, I move to request the law and justice offices, which includes Superior Court, District Court, Juvenile Court, Clerk, Thurston County Sheriff's Office and Coroner's Office to work to gra- together to prepare a shared reduction plan which meets the targets set by the Board of County Commissioners on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. In order to meet with the board, a proposal must be submitted to the clerk of the board with itemized and specific reductions that meet the combined budget reductions targets for the specified offices on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five by nine A M.
Second.
Oh. Okay.
Okay, motion is second. I have a, can you repeat the, um, the the offices that you listed?
Please. Superior Court, District Court.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I didn't hear District Court.
Go ahead.
Superior Court, District Court, Juvenile Court.
Got it.
Clerk.
Yep.
Sheriff.
Yes.
Coroner's.
Okay, the two that weren't listed there are prosecuting attorney and pretrial services.
Prosecuting Attorney's Office should be in there. Pretrial is not. It's the law and justice offices.
Um, so, okay, so.
I got it. I'll, I'll type it in.
Sorry, we were working quick.
That's what happens when you have.
Just to make sure that it's complete for Commissioner Klaus's original.
Which had, uh, uh, defense also.
Okay.
I'll accept a friendly amendment.
To include prosecuting and pretrial service. Thank you.
Um, well, pretrial services, uh, has already taken all their cuts. And I'm happy to have them as part of the conversation.
I mean, they could be the, I I don't really want to, there's, historically, we don't put a little elected official, like, we don't put department directors in that sort of environment. There, there's a power imbalance and a, and a, and an issue that, so I I would support not having them included. Um, what's the other one? Right, public defense.
That's a department, but a vital one, but I do.
Vital one, but we, we also have the whole, the thing with the case law standards that were, so I would say that they would not be included. Commissioner Klaus?
Okay, so, um, let's see. For public defense, I do have a question for public defense, but it doesn't necessarily have to be wrapped up in this action, but, um, so I guess I'm hearing a couple of components of the motion and one is, the first part is we're requesting that these partners get together and come up with a shared proposal that they then bring to the board. Um, and in order for them to even come meet with us, they have to have it by a certain time. Um, I think really the motion just needed to be that we have a work session and making a motion that tells elected offices what to do might not necessarily be the best action to take.
Perhaps, can I jump in real quick?
Mm-hmm.
So we're trying to thread a couple of different needles, so meeting the statutory deadlines that we need to achieve with publishing the budget uh, and also adhering to the request that was made when other offices and departments presented on September seventeenth. So trying to find a way to have a shared conversation while not pushing the deadline further is the intent of what we've heard the board try and express.
I think for me, a concern with the way the motion is written is that the whole thing is being brought forward by a commissioner's request to have a work session, but that work session can't even take place unless these elected offices do something by Monday at nine A M. So that would, if if we don't get all of that by Monday at nine A M, we don't get to have the work session. And that's like, that would negate the whole entire purpose of the request in the first place. So maybe taking out the piece where we have to rely on offices to do something by Monday at nine A M. We can request that, but I don't think it should be a stipulation to scheduling that work session.
So maybe I, I may jump in because it was my request, so, or proposal. The work session was over here. The proposal that I, uh, proposed was to have information on how to meet the budget reductions. So I hear, I hear what you're saying, but the goal was to try and have a shared partnership on the budget reductions.
I would just say that the budget, the the motion for the work session failed. There was in, there was renewed interest from other board members when, if there's this additional component of some input from, some collaborative input from the partners. And so, like, for example, I would be much more willing to have that work session if there was new information, you know, from the subject matter experts of our o- our elected o- offices, law and justice partners versus if they just don't do it, then it's back to the original motion that failed. They just have a board discussion about the same breakdown of the ten point eight million dollar cuts. So does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Um, not necessarily. I kind of disagree with a piece of it, which is that the motion had failed due to the desire to not push out a timeline. And like I had stated, my understanding, uh, changed after the board conversation during that failed motion that, okay, let's not delay the timeline. I agree with that. And so that was the piece I think we were hung up on was let's not delay the process. Um.
Obviously, that wasn't my position.
One piece.
Okay, okay, then just one piece.
Position, as I stated before, was understanding, uh, understanding what I know about the system and having all the conversations that I've had and all the work I've done, I wasn't sure I saw.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Um, what I hear in this motion is conflating a request that there's been expressed frustration that the request wasn't met, which was the request to have these, some of these partners present what these cuts are going to look like for them. I don't want that request that was, that there is frustration because staff didn't get that to be conflated with a motion that's intended to allow the board for another opportunity to talk about the ten point eight million dollar cuts and those impacts on the public safety system. So I feel like we're kind of muscling in this, oh, well, we got, we requested from Superior Court and others to send this information and they didn't send it, so, oh, well. And I don't want that to be a part of this motion, because that's, I mean, I just feel, I don't know, does that make sense? No? So we had staff go out and, that's okay, I'll try to explain it differently. So we had staff, I'm trying to be respectful of staff's needs.
I would love to respond to that if I, when you're done.
Do you know what I'm saying? Go ahead, yeah.
So you're reading intent, that we are putting something in there to make the offices go through the exercise that departments already went through. Um, and the, the purpose of putting that in there was to give the board the information that we think you're going to need in order to make the decisions. We all know that cuts are very, very significant and they're very, very difficult. But they have to be made. And so now you're just talking about who's, where they're going to be made. And so if you just have one section come forward and they just talk about the impacts, but you don't have any data as to how they're going to do that, to realize the impacts, that then the board decides, you know, at the eleventh hour, we don't want to, we don't want to use that dollar amount, we're gonna have somebody else take a cut. Because that's, that, those are the options. You're gonna move, you're gonna shift it, somebody else is gonna take the cut. Or you're gonna pass a budget that's just not balanced. I mean.
And and every office is now working on the numbers that the board has voted on and that is board direction. If you're gonna make shifts, which is, you know, within the board's purview, there's gonna be another office that is gonna get impacted who's already loading things in the budget, making preparation. So what we heard from, after the motion, um, didn't pass for the work session was what's the new information? Would be coming together to have a shared approach. That would be of an interest for the board, and that's why staff taking that has prepared that motion as it is.
That's how I understood, but I.
Yeah.
What's the problem there, with that?
Um, I, perhaps one path forward would be for like me to have an opportunity to connect with staff and then revisit this motion tomorrow because it was rushed in a short recess and I don't necessarily want to have to go through and repeat everything we just talked about and keep everyone here longer, but I will, it just doesn't hit on the intent that I was putting forward earlier in my original motion. Um, I'm happy to talk with the county manager and staff about that intent. So that maybe tomorrow we could, because I, I would hate for a rushed motion that was made on a reset, like during a quick recess so that we could get it done to off, like to kind of derail the intention, which was for me to be able to have more information. I don't think that this motion quite hits on the new information that would be needed to have this discussion. I don't think that it's gonna, I don't think it meets that need. I think it might need a little bit more conversation that if the board is, like, we don't have to have it here unless folks want to keep talking about it, but.
I I I'm just really confused by your. Let me just respond. I'm really confused because if the information, if new inform, if new helpful information to the commissioners isn't gonna come from the law and justice partners, where's it gonna come from?
Well, it will. Yeah, yeah. No, I'm not saying it won't. I'm just saying in this specific motion, we're asking them to come up with this, these pieces of information which are being read and I I don't even have it in front of me. Um, like, I don't think that what we're asking for in this motion necessarily is the best way to go about getting that information.
Okay, Commissioner, for you.
You, you, you keep talking about your intent, right? And respectfully, what moves forward is not necessarily your intent, it's the, it's the group's intent. And so you may proffer up an idea and the board may be like, yeah, I like that, or I don't like that, or we may kick around. And then what comes out the other end could look totally different, but it was influenced by your, your, you know, what you have proffered. But it doesn't always and rarely ever looks exactly like what you proffered. So that's the process.
Yeah.
And you, you, sometimes you have to let go of your intent and and join on with the board's intent. And so you came in and you, you gave, you added things to the conversation, to the group discussion, and the group grabbed it and wrestled around with it and said, well, you know, this is valuable out of it. And 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 something is coming out of the other end that is helping us move things along. We have to move along with it.
Yeah, that's okay. And I, I'm offer, I'm trying to say that in, uh, in an offer to help, not to necessarily say, oh, give me this, it's my intent, this is what I want. So I appreciate that input. I'm not, I'm not saying that because I'm trying to push the, my singular agenda. I'm saying that because I'm willing to have a conversation with county staff. It sounds like probably that's not, that's okay. That's okay. I'm agreeing with you. You don't need to, I'm agreeing with you. Um, so then we can have the conversation here and I can explain why I don't think the motion is going to work. Um, we would be, we're making a motion here that an action will be taken by the board and staff and that action is setting up a work session only if the offices get together and provide us with some information that is unclear to me because the motion's been read and I'm, I can't see it. I need to be able to see the motion to understand what's being asked, unless we want to read it again for like the fourth time, which is okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I need to read it to get. Email it.
Yeah.
Let me email it to you, because I understand having, you have.
Thank you, yeah, that would be helpful.
Wish for grant your hand, sir.
Uh, well, I just, I was gonna ask for it to listen one more time. Um, I would, uh, I just, I need to hear it again before I comment.
Can you send to the printer?
No, I, I would comment that, you know, I think that, that, um, I don't think that we can give direction to the, um, offices, um, that, but, um, I, you know, I also would say that I think that it is important that we have new information, that we do get something from the offices that says if, I mean, That we do get something from the offices that says if, I mean. I'm gonna just say it like this, that the sky is falling, right, so we are hearing that. We're, we, all of these issues are going to happen, so that does need to get presented at some time, like we're gonna have to cut these positions. In order to meet this, this, um, you know. This man, like, you know, if we're gonna, this is what's actually going to happen, I mean, I know that at some point Summers team has to get this information into a system. Um, you know, but I don't know that I'm in agreement with the fact that we give a, you know, nine AM deadline. Uh, and then that makes it so we can't have a work session. I think if they came with information to the work session, something like that. Then, and then we leave the work session and then, you know, we're able to give Summer something, something like that would be a little bit better.
It seems to me, I, I, maybe it's just, I'm just, I'm just assuming something that's, that needs to be laid out, it seems to be. Whatever is come, whatever comes forward, we're gonna have to do something with it, we're gonna have to discuss it, like, it's, it's obvious that there would be a discussion amongst the board about. The information that's provided by the law and justice partners, so if you wanna just say that, that the board will discuss. Whatever input is provided, whatever new input is provided, we don't have to say it's a perfectly dialed up seven million dollar reduction plan, but. Whatever new information is provided by law and justice partners, the board will discuss. I mean, I thought that was obvious, but maybe that wasn't obvious to, to everybody. Does that capture what you're trying to capture, Commissioner Klaus? Cause you keep saying, well, then if you don't, they don't do what we say, then we're not gonna have the discussion.
That's what the motion says.
Okay, well then, can we tweak them, I mean.
Send it to everyone.
Thank you.
Think it's good as it stands.
I think Chair, that one thing you're, we're trying to um, avoid is an office or a couple of offices saying, we're not gonna cut.
Exactly, and that's what I was saying.
So that puts it, if I can finish.
Well, no, because that's what, that's what the Assistant County Manager tried to restate on my behalf. To clarify, and then you took the conversation again and it got away from that, that's exactly what I was trying to say.
I wanna hear the county manager, what you're saying.
Amendment, amendment.
Okay, county manager first.
So, um, if offices say they can't cut, then there's no new information. I mean, the, the, the decision point, yeah, and the part of the discussion has been. Offices come to present to the board what the impact of the cuts.
That could be a really short conversation for the board then.
Yeah.
That's the result.
That's fine, but the way the motion is written is, in order to meet with the board, a proposal must be submitted to the clerk of the board with itemized and specific reductions, I mean. So everything you just said about it being obvious, well, not only that, but it's in the, it's outlined right here, you can't meet with the board unless you do this.
Okay, there's two different things, I guess there's meet, there's them meeting with the board versus, you, you've been talking about from the beginning is just us having a conversation about something. I didn't know that you were ever proposing that we'd have a joint meeting with the law and justice stakeholders to, is that what you meant by the work session?
Yes.
Okay, that was never clear to me.
Make a motion to amend the motion, how's that work? I mean.
You can propose an amendment to the motion.
I would propose that we change the language, it says, in order to meet with the board, a proposal must be submitted, I proposed instead. We say, in order for the board to have continued discussions, proposals must be submitted to the clerk of the board. With itemized and specific reductions. So I would say in order.
Isn't that the same thing?
No, in order for the board.
It's just removing a deadline, which is important.
Not reducing, I mean, the deadline's still there, it's just that I'm saying that in order for us to be able to have a discussion. Proposals must get in by the twenty seventh, instead of it saying, but we won't have, you know, in order for them to meet with the board. I mean, I'd like to be able to discuss, like what you've said, I'd like to be able to discuss whatever is submitted, but I do agree that maybe we won't get all the submissions.
But the, the framework for Josh's recommendation was a shared plan, not individual proposals.
But what if they don't do that?
This whole thing, like, we don't even have to have that part in the motion, we can just say that we move to direct the county manager. To set up a work session with all of the partners, it could be that simple.
That motion already failed.
No, that wasn't my motion, my motion was to do that before the preliminary approval and that motion failed.
Yes.
We're taking the preliminary approval time part out, because there were concerns. Can you please stop, Wayne, Commissioner Fornier, please?
We have a motion on the table.
Fundact actually does talk about interrupting, and you do that quite frequently, so please just stop.
Go one, remain to the motion.
Let's just go one at a time, please.
We are. The motion on the table has a lot of stuff in it that it doesn't need. We can just make the motion to have the work session, which was not the previous motion.
So debate that.
I've said my piece, that's what I think, we don't need that, we don't need all of the fluff in the beginning, the stuff in the beginning is.
The fluff in the beginning? The fluff in the beginning was the proposal from Josh that, that actually got support from the board to recess for fifteen minutes and try to put. It into writing, that's not the fluff, that's the meat.
Okay.
Chair, call for the vote.
I don't think that it's possible to demand that they come up with a shared reduction.
Demanding it, but if they want the board to reconsider decisions made, then that, that's, that's our condition, they don't have to do anything, they're elected officials.
It's, it's creating an opportunity for them, for them to have another bite at the apple.
Yeah.
And, and, and what you've said, what you've stated is that there may be an imbalance within that system that needs to be leveled out, and we're giving. We're requesting that they convene and, and discuss that amongst themselves as experts to figure out if there's a, a rebalancing of things. Within that framework, that they would then come proffer to us and we would accept, that's. So like, it is, in my mind, it's meeting most everything that you've tried to identify.
Your, your argument is that, my understanding is that your, your argument is that the, the, the distribution of the cuts are so imbalanced. That it's gonna create a systemic imbalance, nobody will know that better. I mean, you can tell me that till the cows come home, but the, the actual partners, the prosecuting attorney, the, the district, the district court judges. The, you know, the, the clerk's office, they should know, if, if we have screwed this up so bad. That we're gonna destabilize the whole system, I think I'm pulling words from earlier that you made earlier today. Then they would have the power to understand, like, yeah, Commissioners, you, you, you messed this up, if you cut this much from the juvenile court budget. I, I'd rather give up, I'd rather have, you know, one less prosecutor than have the whole system destabilized in the way that. Commissioners, you've, you've, you've structured it, that's a conversation that they have the subject matter expertise, hopefully they have the, the vision. And the collaborativeness and the, and the commitment to what's best for Thurston County and not just their own, you know, selfish, you know, uh, uh, shop. Uh, perspectives to come up with something that's more balanced, that, than we can do. And, and, and if they can do that, I'll probably rubber stamp it, because they know, they know better than we know. That's what we're trying to get to with this idea, I don't know if it'll work, but I'm willing to give it a try as a pathway to the, the, the. Or decisions that you think that we've made.
Who's next?
Commissioner Fornier, then Commissioner Klaus.
Absolutely right, this is an opportunity for them to get together as experts and see if some leveling needs to be done. And then they, and then they can get a proposal to us, that seems to be what the board is comfortable with, but I, I think what, what you're trying to set up. Is holding court in here with everyone at the table and then litigating the entire system and having a big. Having a big meeting uh, over those things, and, and that I don't think is productive, that's, that's putting on a show instead of governing. In my, that's my opinion, and, and so what I, what I, why I'm comfortable with this proposal is because it tries to craft a product. And it brings people to the table that are experts and gets them together, and, and it's not a, a commissioner going and, and, uh, you know. You know, meddling with staff, and it's not individual offices coming in and picking commissioners. And, and trying to lobby and influence for, for their specific needs, it's looking at it more holistically, and then it's getting us a plan, that, that I like, that's governing.
Okay.
Commissioner Klaus, you have the floor.
Thank you, um. Commissioner Fornier. Sometimes you say we need to go get with staff to get information as individual commissioners, and then other times like now you're saying that would be meddling with staff and. These, these just double standards, I'm, are very frustrating, but what I will say is. This, okay, so the reason why I take issue with this motion, it's not because I disagree that the justice partners should get together to. Figure this out amongst themselves, that is a good thing, that is a good recommendation, however, the way this motion is written. Forces them to provide us with something that's very, very specific and narrow in order to have a work session schedule.
That's what Mr., I'm sorry to interrupt, but I thought that's what Commissioner Grant amendment was designed to avoid, keep it more flexible.
The amendment never got a second.
Never got, just, just to make sure that we're all trying to get to the same goal here.
Well, whether we change it to the way Commissioner Grant, which I don't know if that's even, we didn't get a second for it, but. The part that I'm taking issue with is. It's, and it's separated into both sentences for some reason, I know it was put together quickly, but work together, we're asking them to work together. To prepare a shared reduction plan which meets the targets, we're also asking them to submit a proposal. With itemized and specific reductions that meet the budget reduction targets, and so, I mean, we are. Asking them to come together to do something that might not actually be possible for them to do in less than a week, when we could just. Have, make the motion for the work session and ask staff to submit this request to the offices. To please come up with this information to the best of their ability before they come to the work session.
Okay, we have a motion, can, can it be re- repeated, cause I don't, I don't bring computers to meetings.
I move to request the law and justice offices, Superior Court, District Court, Juvenile Court, Clerk of the Courts, Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Thurston County Sheriff's Office and the Coroner's Office, work together to prepare a shared reduction plan which meets the targets set by the. B O C C on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. In order to meet with the board, a proposal must be submitted to the clerk of the board with itemized and specific reductions. That meet the combined budget reduction targets for the specified offices on October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five by nine AM.
So who will be responsible for submitting that proposal? Which elected official, which office is supposed to submit that, will they all be submitting that individually and then it's compiled by staff?
They would figure that out. It's not stated in the motion.
So then how, how will the county manager know if the proposal was submitted properly? What if all but one? Participate, then we don't get to have a work session as a board?
Believe there was an amendment to that.
I might have been willing to second the, the amendment, we just got.
Everybody just went off, off talking, so.
She called question.
But he asked for a second.
Here's the language change, so the original proposed motion was, in order to meet with the board, a proposal must be submitted. Commissioner Grant proposed, in order for the board to have continued discussions, a proposal must be submitted.
Proposals must be submitted, proposals. That was the change, and that was to address the fact that if more than one proposal comes in, then not just a proposal. But maybe there's multiple proposals or some people submit and some people don't, then we still may have a discussion.
I'm seconding that proposed amendment, is there discussion on the amendment?
Uh, the whole, for me, the whole intent is to look at it globally and try and find a holistic solution with all the justice partners. And if we're just reopening it up for individual offices to submit proposals, that is not my intent here. And that is not what I heard this discussion trying to get to at, at any point.
I'm afraid that that's where Commissioner Klaus says proposals were taking us, it's not how I hear Commissioner Grant, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the amendment.
I heard, I heard that until she added proposals.
Well, that's, my intent is, Duane, my intent there is only, is just that. To give the opportunity that if, I mean, I don't think there's gonna be multiple proposals, but if there were. Five out of the seven that got together and proposed something, then maybe we, we can at least discuss.
I, that's, I'm with, I'm with you.
I hear, but you have to take the S off at the end, otherwise each individual apartment is gonna make their own proposal and they're not gonna understand, well, they're, they're adults, they're professionals. I think that they can figure out if they need to elect a leader or, you know, how they convene, how they hold meetings, I know that they know how to do all those things. But what I don't wanna do is create an opportunity for multiple counter proposals to, to come in from each individual office, this. I feel we are trying to, you know, create another opportunity for them to take a bite at the apple. And, and say, hey, look, we, we understand that this is a system, and we want to give you as experts the opportunity to reconvene. And help us craft a better product, but you do have to do that together, and you do have to get us some information so we can make a good decision. If we put, if we say proposals, then we're not, uh, we're not really. Setting the table for us to get that information, I feel.
But it also gets, like, my, my point there would be that it also gets us closer to what Summer needs. So that if we need to get this information, then however we need to get it.
I'm gonna call for the vote on the amendment.
Aye.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, so now we have a vote, let's take the vote on the amended motion, uh, which is, that's the amendment to the underlying motion, so.
Can we read that?
Yes, I move to request the law and justice offices, Superior Court, District Court, Juvenile Court, Clerk of the Courts, Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Thurston County Sheriff's Office and the Coroner's Office, work together to prepare a shared reduction plan which meets the targets set by the B O C C. On October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five, in order for the board to have continued discussions. Proposals must be submitted to the clerk of the board with itemized and specific reductions that meet the combined budget. Reduction targets for the specified offices on October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five by nine AM.
I just have one more thing, and I hope it doesn't derail, October fifteenth, the last, the last number I had was wrong. It was the eleven million.
Just added the, um.
Right, the colas, yeah, no, my number, the eleven million was wrong, the ten point eight is right, was the ten point eight what we got on the fifteenth? Or was that a couple of days later?
The board took action on October fifteenth to apply seven hundred thousand dollars in non-represented colas.
Okay.
That's Superior Court, Juvenile Court and Clerk.
That is correct.
And I don't know if we've received the up, an updated, um.
Sheet.
Sheet.
I don't have a sheet.
Yeah, I don't have an update sheet, mine's not.
Okay, as long as that sheet's, so they, they're working from that number, that was the only thing.
Yeah, just to make sure the number, they get the numbers that are.
Why we selected that date in the motion, okay. Well, I just wanted some clarification, so like, the, in that motion, it says that we must receive. That pro- proposal in order to have continued discussions, that's very vague. I, I just wanna make sure that if we, that doesn't mean that if we don't receive proposals, we can't have any future discussions. It doesn't, I mean, it's, it's pretty vague.
It is, that, that's how I felt about the whole thing.
Well, I, I felt it was more specific before the amendment, but I'm, I'm willing to go with this as long as everybody understands the intent. It is, is that we are not stopping any further discussions on budget if we don't get the, if we don't get the proposals.
Okay, uh, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, we're at the end of the agenda and we're.